It's now three o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Jerry, we're sure that all members of the Planning Commission are here and present. Welcome, members of the audience, the public. We appreciate you coming out today. If you don't know, you're welcome to get an agenda in the back of the room so that you can follow along with all items that we're going to be discussing today. First item is approval of today's agenda. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So a move.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I give you guys an overview of what's going to happen today so that we can follow along, get our introductions and whatnot? Today Deputy State's Attorney Michelle Hoffman will provide background information with regard to South Dakota Supreme Court decision in Kroll Ready Mix Incorporated versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners and the adoption of Pennington County Zoning Ordinance 320 and the subsequent litigation in the case of Duane Abada versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners, currently pending before the South Dakota Supreme Court. Environmental Planning Supervisor Brittany Mulder will provide general information concerning Kroll Inc.'s mining and construction permit application. The following PowerPoint presentations, during the following PowerPoint presentation, staff will present specific information concerning Kroll Inc.'s mining and construction permit applications. Kroll will presently seeking mining and construction permits to mine the active pearly pit as a rock quarry. Planning Department staff will present specific information concerning Kroll Inc.'s mining, construction permit applications separately and in the following order. Mining permit application 1802 under current zoning ordinance 320 effective on or about March 28, 2019. Construction permit application 1811 under 507A effective of Pennington County Zoning Ordinance 507A effective September 25, 2013. Mining permit application 1803 under county ordinance 507B effective May 1, 2001, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Pennington County Zoning Ordinance 320. Representatives of South Dakota Department of Transportation are available to provide further information as requested by the Planning Commission. Following staff presentation regarding the pending mining and construction permit applications, public comment will be allowed. Persons wishing to speak must sign the speaker request form, the speaker request signup form. There will be a single public comment period to address all agenda items. Public comments will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. That is three minutes per person, not three minutes per person per agenda item. So you get three minutes, not nine minutes. Persons wishing to allocate their speaking time to another must date so on the speaker request signup form. The applicant and/or, the applicant or its representative will be allowed to speak to the applications following the public comment period. Following the public comment and statement by the applicant, the Planning Commission will address Kroll Inc.'s mining and construction permit applications separately and in the following order. Agenda number five, mining permit 1802 under the county ordinance 205C, that's supposed to be 305, 205C 31, 320 effective on or about March 28, 2018. Planning Commission to make, the Planning Commission is to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on this mining permit 1802. Agenda item number six, construction permit 1811 under county ordinance 205B 17 effective April 26, 2017, and 507A effective September 25, 2013. Planning Director is going to make a decision on this construction permit 1811. And item number seven, mining permit 1803 under county ordinance 507B effective May 1, 2001. Planning Commission will make a decision on the mining permit 1803. Before beginning the PowerPoint presentation, the members of the Planning Commission should disclose all site visits or information received from third-party sources. Members should also disclose any personal relationships or financial interests that could be perceived as a potential conflict of interest. Members must decide if any potential conflict of interest would disqualify such official. If a member believes he or she has a conflict of interest, such member must recuse himself or herself. However, no member may participate in discussing or vote on an issue if the official has a direct pecuniary interest in the matter before Planning Commission, or at least two-thirds of the Planning Commission votes that the official has an identifiable conflict, identifiable conflict of interest that should prohibit such official from discussing or voting on a specific matter. Are there any disclosures that anyone would like to make?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I live in Copper Oak subdivision, so many of my neighbors are interested in this issue. I have not taken a position with them. When they talk, I listen, but I have repeatedly told them I will remain neutral. So I don't know if that would be deemed a conflict of interest.
Does anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Gabe.
Just to disclose that I have visited the site.
Okay. Any other members have any disclosures?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't visited the site recently, but I drive by it nearly every day when I go home back. But back when I was a student in geology at School of Mines, a long time ago, we did visit the site. And also, before I was sat on, before I was appointed to the Planning Commission, I was contacted by some of the concerned neighbors, and, but I've had no contact or no discussions with anybody since I've been on the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any other disclosures?
I'll disclose that I used to work out in the tourist industry in that area, and I used to pass the site multiple times a day. And most recently, I've been past that site Monday and Tuesday evening, in the evening specifically doing some research for this, for this meeting, just so everyone else is aware. Any other disclosures?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know the necessity, but I've driven by the site. I've never been into the mine site. Other than that, I have the information in front of me that's been provided by the county.
Okay. Any other disclosures?
If not, I just would like to point out to the audience, as you sign up to allocate your minutes to someone else, if you're doing that, I don't know if anyone's doing that, but if you do, if you have material that you would like to submit to the Planning Commission to review, so before you come up here, we would like for you to go ahead and turn it into PJ or Brittany over here so that they can get copies to us. We do plan on taking a recess about 5:30 for at least a half an hour. So if we have any material, new material, we could have the opportunity to review it uninterrupted for about a half an hour and then come back and resume. So we do plan on taking a recess from 5:30 to 6 o'clock, and then we'll restart the meeting at that point after we've been able to review that.
Any further from the Commission? If not, I'll go ahead and introduce Michelle Hoffman to come forward.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I'd like to begin by providing the Commission as well as members of the public background information that I believe would be, will be helpful in considering this matter. Begin, I'd like to address the Supreme Court decision of Kroll Ready Mix Inc. versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners. This particular Supreme Court case was decided upon Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Sections 507A and B as written and in effect prior to the adoption of our current zoning ordinance Section 320. The facts are important to this case, the facts in that case are important to this case as well. The Pennington County Planning Commission heard construction permit number 1517, and the Planning Director subsequently approved that permit pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance Section 507A, and issued a memorandum approving construction permit 1517 for Kroll Ready Mix Inc. to operate the rock quarry otherwise known as the pearly pit. Pennington County did not require at that time, nor did Kroll Ready Mix Inc. seek a mining permit, as the continued mining of the pearly pit was deemed a legal non-conforming use under the diminishing assets theory. According to South Dakota Department of Transportation records, the pearly pit has been mined as a rock quarry since 1966. Area residents subsequently appealed the Planning Director's approval of construction permit 1517 to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners reversed the Planning Director's decision and denied Kroll Ready Mix Inc.'s application for construction permit 1517. Kroll Ready Mix Inc. then appealed the Board's decision to the Circuit Court. The Circuit Court disagreed with the Board's interpretation of zoning ordinance Section 507A and concluded the Board's decision denying the permit was arbitrary. The Circuit Court reversed and remanded the matter back to the Board with instructions to affirm the Planning Director's issuance of construction permit 1517. The Board appealed the Circuit Court decision to the South Dakota Supreme Court. In its decision, the Supreme Court did not consider whether the Circuit Court's conclusion that the Board's decision was arbitrary was correct. Rather, the Supreme Court reversed and based its finding on their belief that Section 507B was central to this case and that Kroll was also required to obtain a mining permit in addition to the construction permit. The Supreme Court further held that Kroll's mining of the pearly pit was not a legal non-conforming use as it sought to expand its operation, converting additional acres of land to use as a quarry. Staff notes, however, that the legal theory of diminishing assets was neither briefed nor considered by the South Dakota Supreme Court. I think it's important to, in understanding the Supreme Court decision, to also understand, understand the legal theory of diminishing assets. The diminishing assets theory is an exception to the general rule that a non-conforming use may not be enlarged or expanded. In a quarrying business, the land itself is a material or resource. So by its very nature, mining consists of a gradual expansion of the ground used, thus the exception. The dimensioning assets theory has been adopted in several jurisdictions, including Alaska, California, Illinois, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, Rhode Island, Utah, Washington, Wisconsin, and neighboring states, Minnesota, and Wyoming. During this litigation, Pennington County enacted a moratorium on construction and mining permits for proposed mining operations in Pennington County. The purpose of the moratorium was to allow the study of the impact of mining in Pennington County zoning districts to evaluate whether current zoning regulations reasonably addressed concerns for public health, safety, and general welfare. A committee including citizens and industry experts was created to evaluate current Pennington County mining regulations. The committee drafted and proposed an amendment of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance concerning the regulation of aggregate mining. Which brings us to the current Pennington County Zoning Ordinance 320, currently regulating mining regulations. The Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners held over 22 hours of public hearing, allowing extensive public comment and discussion. Zoning Ordinance Section 320 was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on or about March 28, 2018. Since the applications that have been submitted in this case, legal counsel for persons commonly referred to as the concerned citizens, oh, let me, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Following the adoption of Section 320, legal counsel for persons commonly referred to as concerned citizens were advised of the date of publication of the notice of fact of adoption. This is important because a petition to refer an ordinance to a public vote may be filed with auditor within 20 days after publication of the notice of fact of adoption. The concerned citizens attempted but were unsuccessful in collecting the number of signatures required for referendum of zoning ordinance 320. Subsequently, the lawsuit titled Duane Abada et al. versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners was filed in Seventh Circuit Court. The complaint in that case was for declaratory relief and sought a court ruling declaring Section 320 to be invalid. The plaintiff's initial complaint alleged that the county was required to publish notice of adoption, fact of adoption, twice. The plaintiff subsequently amended their complaint to further allege that the county was required to publish notice in its legal newspapers at least 10 days in advance of all hearings, including continued hearings held before the Planning Commission or Board of Commissioners. The Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners in this case, in fact, published, let me rephrase that, in holding the hearings concerning proposed Section 320 prior to its adoption, the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners did publish notice in each of the Pennington County's three legal newspapers 10 days in advance of the initial hearing before both the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. However, the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners continued the initial hearings in this matter to allow further public comment. Plaintiff argued that the notice was required to be published in the legal newspapers 10 days in advance of all the continued hearings. So that was the two bases for the law, for the complaint. In a decision issued by Honorable Jane Withfiefl, the court ruled that the county correctly published notice of fact of adoption once in the legal newspapers. However, the court went on to hold, declare Pennington County Section 320 invalid, concluding that the county must publish notice in a legal newspaper at least 10 days in advance of all hearings held before the Commission and Board of Commissioners, including continued hearings. Because this ruling affected not only the adoption of Section 320, because it also, let me rephrase it, this ruling not only affected the adoption of Section 320, but also possibly affected any zoning ordinance amendment previously adopted to that date. So moving forward, the county felt it was important to appeal the Circuit Court's decision. We would note that the publication procedure followed by Pennington County, or a similar procedure, is followed by most, if not all, counties in the state of South Dakota. So Judge Withfiefl's decision not only impacts Pennington County ordinances, but it potentially impacts ordinances across the state and all counties. As a result, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners sought and was granted permission to file an amicus brief, also known as a friend of the court brief, in support of Pennington County. A decision by the South Dakota Supreme Court is currently pending in this matter. Kroll Inc. now seeks permits to mine the active pearly pit. However, due to the uncertainty created by the litigation and anticipated Supreme Court decision in the case of Duane Abada et al. versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners, this presents a question as to how to proceed on Kroll Inc.'s applications. In response to Kroll Inc.'s applications for mining and construction permits, legal counsel representing the concerned citizens have argued that zoning ordinance 320 is invalid and that the applications must be decided under the old ordinance, under Sections 507A and B as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Section 320. However, South Dakota codified law 15-26A-38 states, "When any county shall take an appeal, service and filing of the notice of appeal shall perfect the appeal and state the execution or performance of the judgment order appealed from." Thus, Judge Withfiefl's order granting plaintiff's motion for summary judgment declaring Section 320 invalid is stayed, and Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 320 is in effect and enforceable. Therefore, due to the uncertainty created by the litigation and to avoid the costly and time-consuming rehearing of this matter, Kroll Inc. has submitted applications to mine the active pearly pit to be considered separately under the current Pennington County Zoning Ordinance 320 and Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Sections 507 and A and B as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Section 320. Kroll's applications, this is very important, as we proceed through this hearing, Kroll's applications will, to mine the active pearly pit, will be considered separately. First, the mining permit application 1802 under the current zoning ordinance Section 320, which was effective on or about March 28, 2018, will be heard. Following the decision, a recommendation, I should say, by this Commission to the Board, I believe its agenda item six will be heard, and that's construction permit application 1811, and that will be under Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 507A effective September 25, 2013. Under our ordinance, the Planning Director has authority to approve the construction permit. Finally, after a decision is made as to the construction permit, the mining permit application number 1803 will be heard by this Board. That's under the old ordinance 507B, which was effective May 1, 2001, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Section 320. Under our ordinance, the old ordinance 507B, this body, the Planning Commission, has the deciding authority on that application. And with that, I will turn the podium over to Ms. Mulder. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Brittany Mulder, Environmental Planning Supervisor. I'm just going to go over the applications and how they came about, and when I wrote my staff report, what kind of standards of review and things that were used. Section 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance regulating aggregate mining was effective on or about March 28 of 2018. As part of Pennington County's overhaul of its mining regulations, Section 205 of the zoning ordinance was also amended on or about March 28, 2018 to list mining as a conditional use in a general agriculture district. Prior to the adoption of Section 320 in the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance and amendment of Section 205 on or about March 28, 2018, mining was an allowed use with the construction permit in a general agriculture district. Kroll Inc. presently seeks a mining and construction permit to mine the active pearly pit. The applications will be considered separately as follows, and Michelle just went over this. Under 320, it will be MP 1802. Under Section 507A, the construction permit application will be CP 1811. Under 507B, effective May 1, 2001, and written and in effect prior to the adoption of 320, that mining permit will be MP 1803. For administrative purposes, Kroll Inc.'s application for mining permit to mine the active pearly pit, considered under Section 320 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance effective on or about March 28, 2018, is identified as mining permit 1802. Kroll Inc. is seeking a mining permit under Section 320 as a conditional use under Section 205C 31 to operate the rock quarry located at 13840 South Highway 16, otherwise known as the pearly pit. The property is currently zoned general agriculture district and highway service district. Under current Section 205C 31 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance effective on or about March 28, 2018, mining is a conditional use in a general agriculture district, heavy industrial and forest service public lands, and a permit is required pursuant to the requirements of Section 320. For administrative purposes, Kroll Inc.'s application for a construction permit to mine the active pearly pit, considered under Section 507A of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance, is identified as construction permit 1811. Under Section 205B 17 of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance effective April 26, 2017, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Section 320, mining was an allowed use in a general agriculture district provided a construction permit was obtained in accordance with Section 507A. Under Section 507A, any disturbance greater than or equal to 10,000 square feet required a construction permit. Under Section 507A, the Planning Director has the authority to make a decision on an application for a construction permit. For administrative purposes, Kroll Inc.'s application for a mining permit to mine the active pearly pit, considered under Section 507B of the zoning ordinance effective May 1, 2001, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of Section 320, is identified as mining permit 1803. Under Section 507B, as written and in effect prior to the adoption of 320, and pursuant to the South Dakota Supreme Court decision in Kroll Ready Mix versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners et al., extraction of any mineral or substance exceeding 100 cubic yards required a mining permit. Pursuant to current Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 205C 31, mining is a conditional use in a general agriculture district, and requires a mining permit in accordance with Section 320. A conditional use is subject to the requirements that are different from the requirements imposed for any other use permitted by right in a zoning district. Under the current Section 320, the Board of Commissioners has broad discretion to impose conditions of operation and safeguards to protect the public, health, safety, and general welfare. County Regulation of Mining Activity under current, the current zoning Section 320 includes what is not limited to site plans, operation plans, erosion sediment control, noise control, dust control, lighting, vibration, blasting, spill filtration, groundwater monitoring, screening, and brining requirements, setback requirements, renewal and transfer of permits, enforcement and bond requirements, et cetera. Under Section 205B 17 of the zoning ordinance effective April 26, 2017, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of 320, mining was an allowed use in a general agriculture district provided a construction permit was obtained in accordance with Section 507A. Under Section 507A effective September 25, 2013, any land disturbance greater than or equal to 10,000 square feet requires a construction permit. Under Section 507A, all land disturbance activities must be performed in compliance with the Pennington County Stormwater Manual, and updated, or the Pennington County Stormwater Manual, and it's updated and drafted by the Planning Director. Under Section 507A, any land disturbance greater than or equal to one acre requires a general permit for stormwater disturbance from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Under Section 507A, the Planning Director has the authority to make the decision on an application for a construction permit. And lastly, mining permit 1803 will be considered under Section 507B effective May 1, 2001, and written and in effect prior to the current Section 320. Prior to the adoption of Section 320, regulation of mining activities was primed through the issuance of a construction permit under Section 507A for purpose of controlling erosion and stormwater runoff. Under Section 507B, the applicant was required to submit site, transportation, and reclamation plans. Under Section 507B, effective May 1, 2001, and as written and in effect prior to the adoption of 320, and pursuant to the South Dakota Supreme Court decision in Kroll Ready Mix versus Pennington County Board of Commissioners et al., extraction of any minerals, substance exceeding 100 cubic yards required a mining permit. Questions?
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the staff? None? All right. Thank you very much for that. You want to go to the next one?
Yes. So doing item number five. Okay, item number five is mining permit MP 1802. The location of the request is approximately three and a half miles south of Rapid City along South Highway 16. They have requested to operate the active pearly pit as a rock quarry for the Rapid City and surrounding areas. This activity will include soil disturbing activities, logging, clearing, and grubbing, installing erosion sediment controls, grading, excavation as necessary for mining, utilities, construction of roads, and preparation for final seeding, mulching, and landscaping. Mining activities will include drilling, blasting, excavation, hauling, crushing, and/or washing of aggregate, stockpiling, loading, and hauling finished product to customer. Applicant stated that the estimated dates of operation through January 2043. And just a little history on this property, mining at this location dates back to the mid-1960s. Numerous operators, including the South Dakota Department of Transportation and Pennington County, have mined at this location since the 1960s. The amount of material mined at this location ranges from 2,000 tons per year, which was the lowest in 1996, to 97,000, over 97,000 tons per year in 2001. Temporary asphalt batch plants with approved conditional use permits from Pennington County were placed at this site on two locations, once in 2000 and once in 2013. And here is a map that was included in the South Dakota Department of Transportation memo dated July 25, 1966, showing areas that were used previous at this location. And here is a list of the information that was pulled from the South Dakota DENR site. This is all of the tonnage that had been pulled from that site since 1983. It looks like the average ton per year for the last 35 years was a little over 22,000 tons. The average tons for years, for the excavated years only, it excluded the ones where there was no excavation, was a little over 30,000. And the average tons for the last five years was almost 50,000 tons. The maximum excavated, again, was a little over 97,000. And permit requirements under Section 320. Under Section 320, the mining disturbance area must be defined by the applicant, and it was called a permit limit. The permit limit that the applicant submitted is above, it's the area there stated in the purple. And the site plan that was also submitted by the applicant, it shows the area of the mining regressions, the existing area of excavations, locations of berms, high walls, and any other erosion and sediment control. The operation plan, the applicant intends to mine Minaco to limestone. Topsoil and overburn will be removed with a loader, dozer, scraper, excavator, haul truck. Once the limestone is exposed, a drill or blast contractor will drill and blast if necessary. The limestone will be loaded and hauled to an onsite crushing plant where it will be crushed and washed, screened, and sorted. The material will then be stockpiled for loading and hauling off-site. The anticipated amount to be mined is somewhere between 50,000 The anticipated amount to be mined is somewhere between 50,000 and 100,000 tons per year. And the average amount of material at this site, again, from 2013 to 2017 was 48,748 tons. The applicant indicated there will be no more than two 32-ton trucks per hour leaving the site. A traffic impact study was completed by the applicant on August 2016 with the most recent revision in January of 2017. The applicant and the South Dakota Department of Transportation are working together to mitigate site distance as identified in the traffic impact study. Dust control, best management practices to be implemented on the site include earth and berms, paved entrances, water sprays, dust covers on conveyor transfer points, and sweeping. Vibration and blasting at the site will be performed by a certified blasting contractor. Pennington County is recommending that notification of nearby residents would be a condition of approval of this permit. Certified blasting contractors, the state of South Dakota does not certify blasting contractors, but Wyoming does. There is a national program that goes through, that they have to go through to be certified. And the applicant has indicated that that is who they will hire to do the work. This is their estimated production and number of trucks. It looks like the most trucks that they are anticipating is in the month of July, and it's 1.8 trucks per hour. Their average number of trucks per day that they're anticipating is somewhere between seven and 16 trucks per day, with an average ton per truck of 32 tons. Their reclamation plan. The current disturbance at the site is approximately 33.5 acres. Kroll has not released liability from previous operators for the reclamation of existing disturbances. Prior to Kroll assuming the property, there were several other operators that have been and worked at site and taken material off of that site. In addition, an additional eight acres of disturbance will occur to enlarge the quarry footprint in the first year and an additional three acres in the second year of operation. One acre will be reclaimed during that time. Reclamation will consist of a wheatgrass native blend. The planning director requested a surety bond for the reclamation of 10 acres of mine land as a condition of approval. Kroll did cement a bond on January 7th, 2019 in the amount of $25,000 for the reclamation. Groundwater and surface water. Surface water is located approximately 2,800 feet from the permit limit. There's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. The estimated depth of groundwater, well depths in the area are estimated to be 300 feet. This was taken from the South Dakota DENR well log database for wells in the area. Approximately 160 feet foot depth on a well log that was performed in 1931 from the log of Victoria Pearly. It is the shallowest static water level that could be verified through the DENR database within 1,500 feet of the permit limit. The applicant has indicated that limestone excavations will not exceed 100 feet in depth. And the applicant did obtain a water rate from the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resources for 19.6 acre feet of water with an anticipated well depth of 1,150 feet. And here is the closest wells within 1,500 feet of the permit limit. It looks like the closest one is about 443 feet to the east. It's the Victoria Pearly well. And drinking water systems near the site that utilize water from the Deadwood. So the well system that is the aquifer that the Kroll well is in is in the Deadwood. So that's why this is significant. Staff did go through the water system information on the South Dakota Department of Nature Resources website. Water systems in the state of South Dakota and nationally, it's part of an EPA requirement, are required to submit what is called a consumer confidence report. And a consumer confidence report is something that they have to distribute to their water users that show that they are meeting Safe Drinking Water Act standards. And the reason that this is significant is to see if there was any, you know, outlying information or concerns in the area as far as radiologicals because that seems to be something of concern in this area. Under the Oaks Water Users Association, the radiological chemical samples are required annually at this site. In their 2017 Consumer Confidence Report, it did not indicate any detection of gross alpha, radium 226, or radium 228 in their drinking water standards. As a requirement of the EPA, they do require a susceptibility study done on all water systems that provide water. And throughout the United States, every water system had to do this. The South Dakota State susceptibility rating for this site is medium. And the Strata Room Estate's Water Company, and then the 2017 Consumer Confidence Report indicated there was detection of gross alpha in that one at 3 pico curries per liter. The MCL under the Safe Drinking Water Act is 15. And radium 226 and radium 228 are combined under the Safe Drinking Water Act rules. The MCL is 5, it was detected at 1. Again, the South Dakota State susceptibility rating is medium. And one item of note here is radiological samples are required every six years at this site instead of annually. The Spring Canyon Water Company, again, radiological samples are required every nine years. There was no detection of gross alpha, radium 226, or 228 in their drinking water samples. Again, their susceptibility rating is medium. Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District, again, their radiological chemical samples are required every nine years for the Kroll site and three years for the Conifer site. And in the 2017 Consumer Confidence Report, did not indicate detection of gross alpha, radium 226, radium 228 in drinking water samples. And again, the South Dakota State susceptibility rating is medium. And lastly, the countryside site, radiological samples are required every six years. And the latest Consumer Confidence Report that was on the state database was in 2015, and it didn't detect any gross alpha, radium 226, or 228. Again, the South Dakota State susceptibility rating is medium. And surrounding land zoning and land uses. So the closest residence to the permit limit is approximately 364 feet to the east. The current zoning of the Pearly Pit is a general agriculture district. The future land use, our current future land use of the Pearly Pit is limited agriculture district. Subdivisions within one mile. This is the location of the closest subdivisions to the permit limit. And then the traffic information, this is just for in case DOT needed it for any kind of comments. But it does show the traffic counts since 2001 along US 16.
Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Oh, I believe I heard you say that they indicated it would average 1.8 trucks per hour. Is that correct?
That is the peak in July. That's what they would anticipate.
I understand. But if they were basing that on a 24-hour day, they won't be running 1.8 per every hour in a 24-hour timeframe. And if they were operating that during an eight-hour timeframe, then the average over a day would be 1.8. But in effect, it would be 5.4 vehicles per hour.
Well, if you look at their chart, their hours of operation are nine. They're anticipating their peak number of trucks is 16.
I understand. But is that through the nine-hour day or is that through a 24-hour day?
That's through the nine hours.
Okay, you're sure that that's?
Yes, their hours of operation, and it's in the staff report. Or in that nine-hour period.
I just wanted to be certain that the 1.8 average was during the hours of operation and not spread out over 24 hours. Thank you.
I think that column points out hours of operations, nine hours operation, and to give that. I just happened to notice that when I was looking up there, so.
Yeah, it's hard to.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
In full disclosure, I live in Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District. So it's off to the north quite a bit, but I saw that it was mentioned in your write-up. So make sure that's out there.
Okay. Any further comments or questions at this time? Okay.
To the next one.
We'll move to the next one.
Okay, item number six is construction permit CP 1811. And the permit requirements under section 507A of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Again, the location of the request is approximately three and a half miles south of Rapid City along South Highway 16. The description of the request is the same. Soil disturbing activities include logging, clearing, grubbing, installing erosion sediment control, grading, excavation necessary for mining utilities, construction of roads, and preparation for final seeding, mulching, and landscaping. Mining activities will include drilling, blasting, excavation, hauling, crushing, and/or washing of aggregate, stockpiling, loading, and hauling finished product to the customer. Again, the applicant stated the estimated dates of operation through January 2043. The mining permit limit and the future disturbance area, for the purposes of a construction permit, we look at the area of disturbance. Again, that is the permit limit, the area there in the purple. Drainage and erosion control, this was submitted by the applicant. The anticipated area of mining is in the yellow. If you look at the area in the red, that is the previous disturbance. And the reclamation plan, again, is the same. The current disturbance is approximately 33.5 acres. Kroll has not released liability from previous operators for the reclamation of existing disturbances. An additional eight acres of disturbance will occur to enlarge the quarry in the first year and an additional three acres in the second year of operation with one acre being reclaimed during that time. Reclamation will consist of a wheatgrass plan. The planning director did request a surety bond for the reclamation of 10 acres of mine land as a condition of approval. Kroll did submit a bond on January 7th, 2019 in the amount of $25,000. They also submitted a bond on January 7th, 2019 in the amount of $10,000 for implementation of best management practices if needed. So that is, any questions?
Any questions for?
On the construction permit?
Any questions for staff? Okay. Third item.
Okay, just one item of note. This is mining permit 1803 under section 507B in effect prior to section 320. The standards of review are different for this one because under this section of the ordinance versus 320, the standards of review are different. So if you look at the standards of review under 320, if you meet those requirements, you meet the requirements under 507A and 507B. Again, 507B, the mining permit requirements were location, scope and duration of mining activity, submission of a site plan, transportation plan, the amount of material being excavated, the type of material being excavated, and the reclamation plan. Again, it's approximately three and a half miles south of Rapid City along South Highway 16. They, you know, again, the scope hasn't changed from the other one. Soil disturbing activities, logging, clearing, grubbing, sediment control, grading, excavation. Mining activities, drilling, blasting, excavation, hauling, crushing, washing of aggregate, stockpiling, etc. And the applicant said the estimated dates of operation are through January 2043. This is the site plan that was submitted. The area in yellow is their anticipated mine progressions. Their operation plan. They are going to mine Minicota limestone. It will be surface mined at the site. Topsoil and overburn will be removed with a loader, dozer, scraper, excavator, haul truck. Once the limestone is exposed, a drill or blast contractor will drill and blast if necessary. The limestone will be loaded and hauled at onsite crushing plant where it will be crushed, washed, and screened and sorted. The material will be stockpiled for loading and hauling off-site. The anticipated amount to be mined is between 50,000 and 100,000 tons per year. The average amount of material mined from the site from 2013 to 2017 was 48,748 tons. And again, here is the Kroll's estimated production and number of trucks. This is at a estimated sales of 100,000 cubic yards. And the reclamation plan, again, is the, they still have not released, obviously, liability from previous operators for the reclamation of existing disturbances. They plan on disturbing an additional 11 acres with one acre of that being reclaimed, reclaimed with the wheatgrass blend. Again, they have submitted a surety bond in the amount of $25,000 for reclamation of the site.
Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none. I just wanna make an announcement just because I've noticed some people coming in. I'm pretty sure the staff is trying to catch all as you come in. But if you haven't had a chance to sign up for public comment, three minutes, you can delegate that to someone else. We'd just like for you to delegate it on the sign-in form just so we know, so we can track that time and go from there. And if you have any documents that you'd like for us to review, please submit it to PJ so they can get copies to us because we will take a break, a recess approximately 5:30, and then we could consider those items before our reconvening at 6 o'clock. Any questions from the planning commission before moving forward? Anything that you would like to address before we open up to public comment?
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Go ahead.
During the public comment period, they're restricted to three minutes. If there's questions of those individuals, how does that work?
So they'll have three minutes to give their presentation. And if someone, you know, if someone takes five people's time and they present for 15 minutes or whatnot. If we're asking them questions and we'll be able to ask and they can respond and things of that nature, that doesn't deviate into their time after they present. Is that what you're asking? I mean, if someone's gone past their allocated time, but we're asking them questions, we're gonna give them time to answer that.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. All right, at this moment, any other questions before I open up to public comment? All right. PJ, you got your list?
PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Just for the information for the planning commission, in all, planning staff collected 22 individual signatures for sign-ups. After the adjustments for those that would waive their time to other individuals, we were down to 13 individuals to speak. Of those 13, 10 of them, as far as pro or against, are unknown.
Okay.
Can I approach and give this to you then?
Yes, you may. And we have a timer so they can see. Is it right in front of me? Okay. So I guess I'm the one who's gonna call everybody up first? Oh, you've already isolated down for me. Okay. PJ, do you have a copy of this so you can do their time?
Did you indicate 21 people had signed up?
He indicated 21, uh, 22 people signed up. After consolidating all their time, there's 13. And he's actually got it listed up here by their name and how much time allotted as individuals have.
Thank you.
allotted to that individual. I take it PJ, you've got a copy of this? So whenever I call that individual, you can set the timer? Do you need me to tell you the time, the person, and the time?
If you can tell us. Cody's gonna be tracking that, and I believe Holly's gonna come up and explain how the timer works.
Okay.
We've also had two individuals just sign up now. We'll get the information to you.
Okay. Go ahead, Holly, how about you explain how the timer works? That way everyone knows since I can't see it, so.
I will do so, thank you. Holly Haney is Commission Office Manager for the public, and I'll run up and show you the box here in a second. But just wanna let everybody know, there is a light timing system that is sitting on the podium in front of the chair. Three lights, green, yellow, red. Green will start your time. Yellow, when that flashes, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. You need to wrap up your comments. Red flashes, you are done with your time. Cody will also yell time so that, not yell, but say time so that the chair knows that timing is up, so. If everybody can see, I'm sorry, here's the little timing box right, located right here.
I won't take it that you're just staring at me. Since there's 13 people, actually, you said 15 total? Are they adding their time to anybody else since you've got a chance to figure that out?
They added their time to existing individuals on that list, so I'll pass that on to you.
Is there anyone in the beginning? Because what I'm probably gonna do, since there's no opponent, well, I get, oh, they're listed in here. There's two opponents and the rest are unknown. We'll start with the top two. Is that gonna affect any of the top two total numbers that they allocated there? Huh? Okay. Do you want to tell me which one?
Let's bring it to you, yep.
Yep. All right. Guess we'll get this started. Dwayne Abada, Mr. Dwayne Abada, you're first with 18 minutes. Is that a good number?
18 is much too long.
Oh.
By the way, my name is ABA, which means I'm first all the time. Did you have to call me first?
Well, you're number one on my list, so absolutely. Unless we go reverse order, we can put you at the end with Z. But you're not a Z, so there we go. We can't start with Z's.
Let's do reverse order. I used to do that in school once in a while.
I have to hand these out. We can hand it out for you if you want to start talking.
I'll remind the public, if you have any items, you can go ahead and bring them up now. That way, if there's copies that need to be made or whatnot, it can be distributed to us just to save a little bit of time so we have some more opportunity to discuss items with you if we need to. Go ahead, Mr. Abada.
Okay, well, I wanna thank, first of all, my name. Okay, well, I want to thank, first of all, my name, Dwayne Abada. I'm a resident of Pennington County and I'm a registered professional engineer. I have been a professor at three institutions.
Can you raise your mic a little bit just so we can hear you a little bit better?
Yes, can you hear me all right now? Last one here down the street, and I have been Department of Mining Engineering at a school in Michigan, Michigan Tech. I want to commend Mr. Conover for his leadership and his direction, that which he's brought to this county. And I believe it's a job well done. I have a quick question, which I'll just stick in here right away. You realize when you count trucks, you have to count return trucks? You don't have to answer that question, but think about it two times, the number that you gave me. All right, let's go on to my presentation. Does everybody have these things? These all around? This is only going to take a few minutes. I want to talk about radon and radium. As you know, radon is prevalent in this area. Many of us have radon mitigation systems in our basements, lower levels. And I believe it's actually required code in some areas. I'm not quite sure about that. But radon is indeed a dangerous, dangerous gas. Just to give you a quick physics lesson here, and I'm sorry, I'm a professor. Half-life is the time it takes for a radioactive substance to decay to one-half that amount. So the radium half-life is sixteen hundred years. I've got that documented here. And radon, you know, it's radium. Radon, you know, is a colorless, odorless gas, and it's, comes from uranium, and it's a dangerous gas. And we have on the left-hand side of the first page the chart which explains the decay of uranium down to radon, which I have circled, and radium. And it goes all the way down to mercury, lead, et cetera. When it becomes stable, it gives off various atomic particles. When it gives off particles, if you happen to be in the way of these particles, it can damage DNA. And it, we all know that the decay of radioactive material causes cancer. And it's just not very nice. Last item on there, number six, on the first page, Crowell has a permit to pump seventeen thousand five hundred gallons per day at their site from the Deadwood, I believe from the Deadwood. Okay, that's just the end of my physics lesson. Flip over the page. And that's, just want to let you know that the radium is a very dangerous substance. That's a historical note there. That's the, I guess we're called the radium girls that were, died when they ingested radium. That's quite a number of years ago, but we all know about that. There's been movies made of that, et cetera. Next page. This is, should not come as any surprise. I did point this out to two of the county commissioners on separate occasions. And frankly, they just said, make sure you bring it before the planning board or the planning commission, which is what I'm doing here. And I've forgotten my booklet back there. Someone bring that booklet up? Not quite a booklet, it's quite an atlas here. And many of you have seen this. Nice picture book produced by USGS. And it's got a lot of data in there about the Black Hills. It's actually a wonderful book. If you turn to one of the pages, and I did not document the page, but you can find it if you dig deep enough. I believe I can read figure seventy-seven there. It plots out the radon concentrations in the Black Hills area. I'm not making this up, it's right there. Let's look at figure seventy-seven. As a matter of fact, let's look at the blown-up section on seventy-seven. It's a little blurry because I had to scan it and blow it up. But you can see that the blown-up area shows a radon concentration of about, if I'm reading this correct, fourteen hundred, and that's picocuries per liter. And picocurie, and the, the harmful number is about four picocuries per liter. So it's pretty high concentration. And that happens to be directly above the Crowell mining site. If you study that enough, you can see Spring Creek. And it's not labeled very well. You have to actually look at the original. But Spring Creek, if you find that, it's, that's basically how you can identify the Crowell area. And the circles represent the concentrations of radon. Now, the reason why I showed you that slide on the previous page or the picture on the previous page is where there's radon, there is radium. And where there's radium, there's uranium. So we can surmise, I think, with a pretty, pretty good accuracy, that they are located right on top of a uranium deposit. How deep, that's something for the geologists to determine. I don't know that. But I do know that if you're pumping seventeen thousand five hundred gallons per day, you're going to disturb a little bit of that stuff. And my concern is a little bit of that stuff might be quite dangerous. And I'm asking Director Conover and the rest of you to take a serious look at that. And if this, if this goes ahead, at least, at least be aware of that and beware of the dangers of that. I'm pointing that out because five, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, if there are serious cases of cancers, esophageal, stomach, lung cancer, we know where that might have come from. And they know that we were aware of it at the time the mining operations began. I think I've said enough about that. So the last page, this is your chance to stop this operation, slow it down, to monitor it, to regulate it. You do have the responsibility to protect the citizens of Pennington County. You have an obligation. Keep in mind that once this thing starts, there's no turning back. You can't stop it. It's almost, it is impossible to stop an operation like this. So with that, I did not use my sixteen minutes. Probably should do a little dance up here, but that's all I want to say. Thank you very much for hearing me out. Do you have any questions?
Just a moment, yes. Are there any questions for Mr. Abada?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Mr. Abada, do you favor any sand and gravel mining within the county? Absolutely. I said, and thank you for asking me that question. I stated in my introduction that I was Department of Mining at Michigan Tech University, located above Wisconsin, mind you, but it's still in Michigan, for about three or four years. I visited many sand and gravel mines, including sand and gravel mines in the Los Angeles area. I was really quite impressed. And we need sand and gravel. It's absolutely necessary for the economy. We can find, take a look at the map. We can find sand and gravel around what's called the racetrack. Geologist, my wife's a geologist, she talks about this stuff. If you look at the Black Hills, it's, it's an oval. And the way it's formed all around this racetrack is gravel. What I am opposed to, or I guess I don't like, is the particular location of this gravel operation. I think it's wrong. It's wrong from the standpoint of traffic. It's wrong from the standpoint of safety. It's on a hill with a blind curve. It's incredibly dangerous if one of those trucks lets loose. And we know, just last part of April, a truck lost its brakes, killed four people, maimed a number of others, smashed twenty-two cars. I don't think you want that on your conscience. I wouldn't want it on mine. It's a bad location. Mining is absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Abada? All right, seeing none. Mr. Don Berger, you have six minutes.
My name's Don Berger. My wife and I live on Wilderness Canyon Road. In the past three years, our group has identified numerous problems associated with a pit at this location. And I stress "at this location" because as Dr. Abada said, we're not anti-mining. We just think this is a bad location. Of those problems that we've identified and discussed before the Planning Commission and the County Commission, I think number one of these is traffic. Highway sixteen is the scenic corridor to Mount Rushmore, often called the gateway to Mount Rushmore. And most of the three-point-five million visitors who see Mount Rushmore each year transit that road going to, coming from, or both. A 2012 traffic study revealed, 2012 now, sixty-four hundred vehicles per day average all year on that road. That study also analyzed two-hundred-and-forty-nine road segments within the city and the planning jurisdiction zone, three miles around the city. Two-hundred-and-forty-nine segments. And of those, the stretch from Reptile Gardens to about Old McDonald's Farm, putting the pit right in the middle, ranked number seven for severe crashes. I have a copy of it if it's available, if anybody wants it. The next traffic study was in 2017. So in that five-year period, the traffic jumped from sixty-four hundred vehicles a day to eighty-four hundred vehicles per day average all year. We all know that South Highway sixteen is a major growth corridor for Rapid City and the county. In the past several years, we've seen Black Hills Energy, several medical buildings, a hotel, a gas station under construction right around the corner on Catherine Boulevard, on and on. We've also seen a large apartment complex across from the Forest Service as well as a planned twenty-four-unit townhomes in Rockerville. A demographic, a demographic study we found said that in a single-family home, it, that single-family home will generate eleven vehicles on the nearest road to it every day. So you have a hundred and sixty apartments plus twenty-four townhomes in Rockerville. Those will add just over two thousand vehicles per day to that road. Add to that the Buffalo Crossing development, which has just been started across from the Forest Service. That is going to be a huge residential development with associated businesses. That all plays into Highway sixteen. Seven hundred acres are for sale at the Sitting Bull Cave, right on top of the hill above Bear Country. That's development property. No one can afford that to raise cattle. In the next twenty-four months, I think the highway traffic on Highway sixteen is going to increase significantly. A few years ago, we spoke with South Dakota DOT asking for turn lanes or acceleration, and acceleration lanes in front of the pit at their approach. They had no interest in installing those, didn't feel they were necessary. Yet, a single-family home that is going in two-point-five, two-point-five miles west of the pit or just past the gas station was required to put an approach in to turn into their, into their home. Trying to figure that one out. We recently had a chance meeting with a gentleman who has been an engineer for well over forty years. That was his career. And he spent the entire time working in the aggregate business, domestic and internationally. And he's a very knowledgeable individual. And you have a, you have a couple photos coming up there in a minute that PJ handed down. When he looked at the traffic numbers that I just gave to you, he, this is what he said. Future traffic levels coupled with this large volume of trucks should require a runaway truck ramp on the northbound lanes prior to the busy Reptile Gardens corridor. And he said, if anyone wants to see the devastation caused by runaway truck, go on YouTube and look for the accident on the west side of Denver on I-70. It occurred on April twenty-fifth. A runaway truck plowed into extremely heavy traffic. Four dead, twelve injured, twenty-eight vehicles destroyed. There's also a photo of that, of the devastation from that accident in that two-part package. I, I went on to Pennington County and Rapid City's Long Range Planning to look at the documents there. In, in all that information, numerous times it references the concept of scenic beauty, quotes, responsible development, quotes, safety, et cetera. And I'd like to close by saying, if you apply those terms to this pit, you can only conclude this is a totally inappropriate location for a Crowell pit. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Haney.
I'm sorry, sir. You indicated the traffic studies and the number of accidents and so on and so forth. Did they break it down for you? And, and I guess my reason for asking, you know, I live in Copper Oaks off of Wilderness Canyon. The past thirty years, I have totaled three cars because of deer running into them. I totaled a fourth car because of a car accident. I'm just wondering if they broke down the cause of the accidents?
That study did not. It, it only separated what were classed as severe accidents versus accidents.
I see.
Generally, I think that the deer accidents are probably in the non-severe category.
Yeah, and.
That's, that's my speculation.
Yeah, and that was the case.
Okay.
Any further, further questions? None?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle Hoffman.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office. I just wanted to remind the Planning Commission that we do have a representative from the South Dakota Department of Transportation here present who will be willing to answer any questions you may have.
I understand.
Absolutely. Any further questions, comments? If not, is it Mick Harris? You have six minutes, sir.
My name is Mick Harris. I live on property about one mi, one-point-one miles directly east of the Pearly Pit. I've lived there for twenty-five years. My big concern is water and traffic. Water, as was explained in some of, in the previous writings here, we, our group of concerned citizens also have a draft about the water along with what Mr. Abada said. There is also withdrawing down when you have well. In the half-mile, square mile that I live in, there are eight wells. Approximately ten years ago, we had a drought. And several people in our area had problems with their pumps not being set low enough to continue drinking water without lowering your pipe or your pump. These are expensive things. It says in the writing there that how much water is drawn out every day with the permit. And the DNR and state authorized there to do this. Seventeen thousand five hundred gallons a day is a lot of water. An average family uses probably around a thousand gallons of water a week. Anyway, in the, I'll leave the study for publication if you want to read it. It's been prepared by one of Dr. Abada's colleagues at the School of Mines. The amount of water, we use a thousand gallons a week, and they're pumping seventeen thousand gallons a day. It's a lot of water to waste. It seems it's a waste if you have to, if you're looking for drinking water. It's not a waste if you're trying to dampen the dust that's produced by all this grinding. I have no objection either to people making a living and selling gravel. In fact, I, in the early years, hauled gravel from that pit to my house to put on gravel, road. It's very convenient and there was never any problems back there. But we can foresee a lot of problems with all these trucks going there. And the other thing with the amount of trucks, I think it's, what was posted is, might lead you to believe that there's not going to be remaining trucks there. But I think that's a little bit underestimated if you've lived there. If you're down at the, one of the most dangerous intersections in South Dakota down there. If you're down at the, one of the most dangerous intersections in South Dakota down tourist season, at Reptile Gardens, and seeing the tourists pull out in front of people coming down the hill. Not last summer, summer before, there was two motorcyclists that got killed by, it wasn't a truck, but it was cars coming down the hill so fast. Actual limit going down the hill is 60 miles per hour. And Pennington County receives a lot of revenue from the people that get stopped for speeding, not only going one way or the other. I would just say that I would hope that the commissioners or the commission would look at this water thing. It's very serious to people that have wells. And the traffic is very serious to our guests that come here to spend money in summer for tourism, be subjected to that dangerous intersection with now with trucks going down the hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Nick?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Rich.
Mr. Harris, your well at your house, what formation is it in?
It's in the Madison.
Thank you.
They are drilling through to get to the Deadwood. So there's actually three aquifers there, but they're going to be punching a hole in it. So it's not just solid. Those things have a way of working their way up also.
Sure. But your well is in the Madison?
That's correct. 750 feet.
Gary, go ahead.
Mr. Harris, I just want to ask you a question relative to the traffic that you mentioned. Since you live that close during the years of 2013, 2017, it was pointed out that there was about an average of about 48,000 ton that was being removed there. What did you notice as far as impacting traffic or traffic concerns at that point in time?
Well, I don't use it on a daily basis. I'm retired, but during the summertime, it's backed up on Nekuok Road for people going, trying to get onto sixteen. And then there's a big lineup going that's backed up from Rapid City, waiting to make a left and turn on Reptile, or the Nekuok Road. The Nekuok Road has a considerable impact on Highway sixteen traffic in the morning and at noon and in the evening for people coming and going to work. And also is all of Hart Ranches that are going there. In the morning, during the school year, there's a school over there, and so there are people bringing their children. There's no bus. It creates a lot of traffic.
Okay, specifically, did you notice any problems that was created because of the truck traffic coming in and out of that pit?
I can tell you how I used to go in the summertime when there's trucks on the road, I'd go over to Hart Ranch and get on 79. It's a lot easier than waiting for trucks coming down the hill. You see them coming, and you know they're not going to stop.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Nick?
I have one. You said you had a well, and I'm just, out of curiosity, I have a well too. So I've been monitoring mine ever since I had it. How often do you check the level of your well water? I mean, do you have frequent reports that you go out and evaluate?
It's pretty hard to check that as an individual. You have to get somebody to weld, take the top off the cap, and you've got to have the equipment to go down there with a bobber to see how far it is. And they usually charge me about $100 to do that. I do take regular water samples, and we have been advised by our, in doing so with this potential thing going on, to take a standard to see what, if the radium and the other, if there's any contaminants. And most of the people in the area that we've told are getting water samples now because of the inevitability of this drawdown.
How often do you do water samples?
At least once a year.
So since you're doing water samples, but you don't do depth of your water level?
No, it's not worth the, I'm as deep as I can go. So whenever we run out of water, I'm going to have to haul.
Okay.
I'm a, my pump's set at 500 feet now, and that's as far as you can, as far as that two-horse part will go. So whenever it runs out, then we haul water and put it in the cistern.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next individual is Gary Mallows. It looks like he has allotted nine minutes.
I'm Gary Mallows, and I live on Bears Loose Road, right behind Bears Country. And that road is named for a purpose. I've had bears in my backyard a couple times. I'm here primarily to talk about three things: recreation, water, and the road hazard. Recreation, you all know that I think we generate about $400 million worth of recreation every year for the Black Hills. Highway sixteen, as you've heard before, is a main artery into our recreational area. I mean, it's been such a concern in this particular area that the city of Rapid City wanted to restrict a new housing complex on the height of the buildings because it was going to destroy the scenery that people come here for. If you don't think a rock quarry distracts from your scenery, all you have to do is go out to Sturgis Road, right across from the game and fish, and look at that area out there. That's a real eyesore. I'm not against mining, but I think that once you start stripping that hillside to open that quarry up, you're going to see that thing as soon as you start down into the Spring Creek Canyon. So that's one of my concerns. The other thing is water. I have a well in the Deadwood Formation. I've lived there for 26 years, and the well is 900 and some feet deep. I set the pump down to 720 feet, and some of the people referred to 10 years ago, well, I remember that well. I was pumping air during that time. And when I drilled the well, the water came up within 400 feet of the surface. My pump was at 720. So that tells you how much of a drawdown happened during that period of time. I had to lower the pump 60 feet to keep water. So when we put in something that's going to take as much water as this operation's going to, and I suspect it's going to be a batch plant before it becomes a, after it's a rock quarry, which will probably increase the amount of water being used. So definitely, I'm concerned about water. The other thing is the road hazard. You know, they're talking about trucks coming out of there 1.8 per hour. Well, a lot of those trailers are coming out of there, doubles. I've seen it because I drive, used to drive that road every day to work. And then the last year, year and a half, I've seen both lanes of traffic on both sides blocked with double trailers pulling across there. Now, you tell me that's not a hazard? That's going to kill somebody. And one of the things that I know, that one of the things we considered by this commission, I don't say you people were here, but two or three years ago, a gentleman wanted to move a helicopter pad about three miles up the road from where we're talking about now. You know why that thing didn't get there? Because people said that was a hazard. We're talking about helicopters flying over the road. Now we're talking about trucks on the road. And I think this has been reiterated by other people that the location is a terrible location for that kind of traffic. And I guess that's my main concern, is those three items. And I think if you can turn a helicopter operation down that's not even on the highway as being a distraction, then surely you've got to consider these trucks that are coming out of there, and they're hauling doubles, which is a hazard even going down the highway, let alone crossing both of them. And I've seen a lot of accidents in the 26 years I've lived traveling that road, and some of them didn't survive. So that's, I won't use my time because I'm sure you got, other people got things there. But anyway, I just want to let you know that those are the three things I'm concerned with: recreation, water, and the hazard.
Any questions for Gary? Gary, since you told me you had a well, I'm just going to ask you the same question as the last gentleman. Do you monitor the depth of your well?
Yes. I mean, that's obvious whenever I wasn't hitting water and...
Fair enough, but I think you know what I mean. Obviously, if, when you have no water, you have to go there. But do you pay attention to it throughout the years? Do you look and see, like, when we have droughts, do you measure to see how deep or how much water's in your well at a time? And I only ask that because I have a well too. And twice a year, I actually test it and see how deep my water level's sitting in my well, because I want to make sure that if I get too low, that I've got to determine what I'm going to do if I'm going to haul water to my home so we can have water. So I'm just asking. It's a, it's a...
Well, I think probably, one of the ways that we check it is when you have to replace the pump.
Right.
I was fortunate that I had a really good pump the first 17 years. But since then, I've had to replace it three times. And each time you do that, you know where the water level's at, just by the pipe. It'll tell you if you look at the pipe. And one of the things that I noticed when I first encountered a problem was in this 10-year period, like I say, I live right behind Bear Country. I can see the bears from my deck on my house. But when they were running the sprinkler system on the highway, you know how it gets dry in the summer, and it's nice to see the green along the highway? That's when my problems, I could tell exactly when the well was going to go dry. Drive down the highway, the sprinkler system was going along the highway. And then that's when I had to do something because, and I've had to change that pump three times since then. And the water level has never been back up to the 400 foot of the surface since then. It's probably, I'd say, I think the last time, which was, can't remember whether it was two or three years ago, that the water level was only probably 100 feet above the pump. So we've dropped it from 400 down to probably 600. And if we get that, that much usage, and he's going to drill into the same formation, the Deadwood Formation. And so I'm very concerned about that. And my only alternative then would be to try to drill deeper, which I'm not sure what you get deeper. Because I know the Madison in our area, I think's about 700. And the Menloosa Formation is right at the surface. When we buried our 5,000 gallon reservoir, the guy that dug it says there's a Menloosa Formation right there, and it was only buried at eight feet.
You made mention, and since it's going to be in the, if they're drilling down to that same aquifer, have you ever tested your water for radium?
Yes.
And has it come back positive? What's the count on it?
Positive. In fact, I gave it to the people that are doing this here. And I had that specifically checked for radium, and it's, I can't remember exactly what the figures were. In fact, I couldn't understand all the terminology that they were using. I'm not a geologist or a hydrologist, but yes, it's got radium in it.
Do you have those numbers that we could see by chance?
I don't have them with me. I can get them for you.
Okay. Any further questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Carl Sanders, you have three minutes.
Obviously, my name's Carl Sanders. Been a firefighter, volunteer firefighter for 14 years. Lived here in the last four. Eleven years prior to that, lived in a rural community, volunteer fire department, and the responsibility in car accidents with that fire department was to use the jaws of life to extract people that had been imprisoned, literally, by their cars, in their cars, along a road, which is very similar to the road that's involved these, this quarry. Because our road had two quarries, regional quarries that were servicing businesses with a great deal of truck traffic. And the truck traffic that overhead I saw is very indicative of an extremely high volume of traffic. The issue that really drives home to people who are responding to these accidents is that car, gravel truck accidents are more severe, normally with extreme severity injury to the people in the car. And as a firefighter with jaws of life in your hands, prying that car away from extremely injured individuals in extreme pain, and kids, which I have a difficult time handling, but somebody's got to do it, getting those people out so the EMTs and the medical people can do what they need to save their lives, okay? The point of this story is, we've talked about numbers, we talked about traffic. It's about people who live or die based on what happens, in many cases, when their car smashes into a quarry. My wife and I are now members of the Pennington County Search and Rescue, which has responsibility for extraction of individuals in cars that were in accidents here in the county. My final point is, allowing this increase in traffic will increase the number of people who will be injured and killed that Pennington County Search and Rescue will have to do what has to be done to get them to safety and medical treatment.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Carl Sanders? I have a question for you. I didn't catch it at the very beginning. Where were you a firefighter at?
Small community outside Peoria, Illinois, called Spring Bay. Eleven years.
I just didn't quite hear it, whatever you were saying it. I'm just going to ask you a quick question. I was an EMT paramedic, so, and I was Air Force, so I, you know, thank you for your service, and so was I. Retired 21 years, so, awesome. But we've heard some comment about development in this area. There's other neighborhoods that are going in, other developments that are going in. What would you say that impact on the traffic's going to be as far as the aspect of if we add these other neighborhoods, isn't that going to also, even if we didn't do anything with these trucks? Let's say this pit didn't go in. Let's just say, all these other developments, would you also be concerned with those develops? And are you going to tell me that you feel with the increased traffic that we shouldn't have further development anywhere in the area?
No. Development is good if it's handled intelligently, if people understand that the traffic will increase in significant numbers. Now, car versus car, not that I think that's not a severe situation, but from my firefighter's point of view, I'd be expecting to not have the degree of severity and entrapment that when a car slams into a quarry truck. But the frequency of being called and having to use the jaws of life to get people out of the car and get them to medical attention will certainly increase. There'll be an increased burden on your firefighters, there'll be an increased burden on your EMS services, there'll be an increased burden on your law enforcement officers. Just common sense.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next individual is...
Next individual is Hurley, is that Paulson? Three minutes?
I yield my time.
Okay. Did you write on the list of who it's going to be to, or you're just, you're good to go? All right. Mike Kwasny? Three minutes, sir.
What's the last name, Mr. Chair?
Kwasny? Did I say it right, sir?
You did, very good.
Wow, okay. Sometimes I get something right.
My name is Mike Kwasny. I live in Rapid City. I'm on the Mount Rushmore Road Business Group. I'm in charge of public awareness for them. I'm also on the Rapid City Planning and Zoning. So I understand the responsibility that you have in front of you here today. And I don't, I know that you don't take this lightly, what you have to do. We, or I'll speak for me, I went onto the planning and zoning because I wanted to make a difference, and I'm sure each one of you want to make that same difference. This feels wrong on so many levels. They've discussed uranium, water, traffic, tourism. All of those things have come up in this conversation. I had some of the numbers, the traffic counts and so forth, but I'm not going to repeat those. We asked that they not repeat things that have been said already in Rapid City planning, so much has been spent on Mount Rushmore Road to make it a beautiful highway. It's the road between Rapid City and Mount Rushmore. One of our responsibilities, I think, is to honor Mount Rushmore by keeping that path looking the way it does with beautiful hillsides. We have visitors that come here, and the numbers were mentioned before, we have a lot of visitors that come and visit for one reason or another. But I would contend that the hills around Rapid City in our county are one of the main reasons. So I think we need to take it serious as a community to give our guests that we invite here, and we spend a lot of money to invite them, we have that responsibility to make sure that the carpet that we roll out for them is one that's very good. And I would just ask, as a group, that you guys really consider what you're giving here or where you're going, because this is not the same as a development sitting on a hillside. This is something that we're tearing out a hillside completely, throwing dust in the air, or using water to get it down, taking water from people's mouths. We've got a lot of things to consider here. So I would contend that this is something that should really, really be looked at very hard. And I know that you will do that. I know it's a big responsibility, but you are here for a reason, and I've got confidence that you'll do it well. So thank you.
Are there any questions for Mike? All right, thank you very much, sir. Sir, you have three minutes. Thank you.
That's seldom done, sorry, that's seldom done right the first time. My concerns, like many others, are for the traffic and the volume of material being removed.
Go ahead and state your name at the beginning.
I'm David Sprangetti, sorry. This is not business as usual. Business as usual has been 45,000 tons. The permit is for 560 tons per hour. That's where you're getting the number of trucks. And they're saying that their plan is for between 50 and 100 tons, but the permit, and that's where they can go to, is for 560 tons. That's in excess of five trucks an hour, even it's probably more like 10 trucks an hour. So I think that's something to be looked at if you're going to approve something in the scope of things, that there's a major difference in the volume, the potential volume of truck traffic here. I'm also concerned, as many others are, about the water and the safety of the water. And, you know, you're pumping, even though it's only a few, or most of a mile away from existing wells, when you're pumping water out of the deadwood and using it for wash, it's going to go back into the surface aquifer. There are caves in this area, which means the transmissivity of water through that aquifer is not slow. It's almost, you know, slightly less than stream velocity. And because lots of this stuff, the caves, it's just air until water gets there and it flows very fast. As explained earlier, radium has a very long half-life, so if you're pumping water up from the bottom, dumping it on the aquifer, it's going to get into the aquifer for a very long time. The, I would encourage you to, in your, if you do decide against many peoples, including my wishes, to grant this permit, that you put further restrictions on the number of trucks per hour, and that there's some monitoring of containment for the radium that comes out of the well and will be dispersed onto the surface. That's all I have.
Any questions for David?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
You indicated that they are requesting permission for 560 tons per hour?
I believe that is what the...
Per day.
Per day, yeah, per day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, per day.
Per day.
And then you interpolated that to mean how many vehicles per hour?
Depends on the size of the truck. But it's between five and 10.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on, I mean, if you're with the double tractor trailer, you're in the five, otherwise you're 10.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir. Carol Hayes? Is there a Carol Hayes? Maybe I say it wrong. H A Y S E?
Says she had a department.
Okay. And as Mike walks up here and I see them in the back of the room, I just declare that I do know the Muelers, and I believe your wife is one of our representatives, one of South Dakota's representatives, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe I recognize, I've had the pleasure of meeting at least four or five of the commissioners, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm assuming all of you have visited the pit, or at least been driving by there. So your familiarity obviously is a key to seeing the site, driving by, 30 years or whatever it may be. Noah, a gentleman is a friend of mine who drives a Mini Cooper, goes by there probably at the rate of speed, or maybe a little more, because he's a car guy. So now you're the unsuspecting tourists, and there's a 50-ton obstruction a few hundred feet ahead of you. At the rate of 60 miles per hour, you're going 88 feet per second. So now at 70 miles per hour, you're going over 100 feet per second. You've got loved ones that are trying to distract you. You've got road conditions, if they're perfect, at 70 miles per hour, you can stop in 315 feet. So add some aggregate on the road, add some rain, add some fog, add some other conditions, now it's not such a pretty sight. So to add to what was relayed earlier, living here for 35 years in and around Rapid City, come to find out that zoning ordinances have impact. Land use has impact. Being neighborly and having proper use of property is definitely worthy, and those planners, as yourself, city planners, Mr. Kwasny, et cetera, have a lot of duty to respond to the citizens. So the city does not have any jurisdiction out here, but they do have some pretty explicit rules for mining. I'd like you to know that the website for Black Hills Concerned Citizens has a position statement. Somebody has done a lot of tremendous work. And talking about zoning, previous lack of support on pages 25 and 26 of that document, quote, "Crowl attempted to purchase land adjacent to the Pearly Pit in June of 2015. As noted in the Pennington County Planning Commission minutes dated June 8, 2015, the request was denied to rezone the land as it does not appear to be compatible with current and future zoning. Furthermore, remarks from Pete Lean clearly stated that they chose not to purchase the land for continued mining uses expansion of the mining operations would have created, it would have created noise, dust, traffic, and so on. And the results would have created adversity." So we've dealt with the DOT in the past on Highway 16 for other functions. They said it's a state highway. They will not change the speed limit. That's 65 miles per hour at that corner. So the sample that Don said, the landowner had to put in approach for DOT or whatever, I don't know. Since 1978, this has been zoned general ag. So how do we get a general ag morphed into a heavy industrial site? Because it's legal? Because it fits the square? Real estate values can be affected. We've got property owners up there that are very concerned if it's the well, if it's the traffic, or whatever the case may be. But this was a small neighborhood store. Now it's becoming a large, large operation. It's not a friendly store anymore. It's not the mom and pop store anymore. That's where it should stay if it continues to operate. Rapid City Area Schools is looking at expanding to the south. Talk about development, you talk about houses, you build a school, they'll build houses. And that will bring more people. That'll bring more hazard. 8,408 people a day, average, over 365 days on that road. Peak of construction is also the peak of traffic. So I've got a few things that I'd like to read out of both the Comprehensive Plan of Rapid City and Pennington County. So this also comes from our website. Comprehensive plans for Pennington County and Rapid City do not support an industrial mining operation for this location. So development should be conducive to residential and tourism growth and not heavy industrial operations. So line and verse. Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, pages 28 to 42, section LUH-6.4, maintains scenic open space character of the Black Hills. LUH-7, coordinate with city comprehensive plans, which I'll read some elements later. In the economic development element, ED-3, attract industries that are considerate of the natural environment. Transportation and circulation element, TC-1, maintain a safe and efficient transportation network for residents and visitors. TC-5, offer scenic views for travelers along county roads and highways. There's a PSF element, not sure what that stands for, so we'll just go to PSF-1.2, buffer wells and water resources from high pollution sources, comma, such as mining. Recreation, open space, and tourism element, ROST-1.1, ensure roadways and accessways to public lands, parentheses, Mount Rushmore, are safe and easy to traverse. That's all in your Pennington County Comprehensive Plan right now. Rapid City Comprehensive Plan. A vibrant, comma, livable community, LC-1.3, project a positive community image along entrance corridors. LC-1.3B, US Highway 16, conserve views and natural features in coordination with tourism industry.
Thank you very much, Mike. Are there any questions for Mr. Mueller? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Welcome, ma'am. Six minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sylvia Cox, and I'm a resident of the area called the Estes subdivision, which is one of the very close ones. We have 10 acres. We just spent $52,000 drilling a well, and we only use 500 gallons a week. And we're concerned about the volume, as has been expressed before. Also, with respect to traffic, I noted, no one's ever mentioned that the exact place where all the Crowe trucks will be pulling out, perpendicular to Route 16, not on any easy access approach, right there, people coming up the hill will be trying to get into bear country because the turning lane for bear country is exactly at that spot. That's enough for specifics. I want to really talk about the concept of an overview, an overview. The idea that you can't see the forest for the trees, and by the time they finish here, there won't be any trees there anyway. But I think there's a mindset here I'd like to speak to, and that is that if enough squares are checked and promise is made, it's okay without regard to the overview of what's happening here. And this concept has been alluded to by other speakers, but I want to be a little more direct about it. And first of all, I believe that the zoning law should be taken into consideration and the loopholes, so to speak, of the fact that the Supreme Court hasn't decided yet shouldn't be regarded as a little window opportunity here where Crowe can be granted this permit before we really know what the Supreme Court's going to say, and the whole process has been completed. Even then, the zoning situation would only be conditional, and I think that word means something, and I think that should be taken in the context of, is, can enough conditions be applied, are too many conditions being applied? When this process started initially, and I have been to most of the hearings on this matter, Crowe was represented by people who I would call their operatives. I believe they were engineers or managers or overseers. And they spoke a lot about what was intended here. They talked about the truck every minute and a half in the summertime. At one of the hearings, in response to a question I asked, they said their intention is to eventually have a concrete plant here. That's what the operatives had to say, things like that. Now, we're hearing from lawyers, and we're hearing from government representatives who seem to be here in the capacity of advocates for Crowe, and we're missing the overview. And this has been alluded to, what is the general condition in the community going to be if this large-scale operation is going to be allowed? There have been lots of promises, there have been lots of restrictions put in place, and why? Why are all these promises, changes of plans, and restrictions in place? Because this is a really big operation that is not appropriate in this location. And all these restrictions, how are they going to be enforced? Is there any agency here that's going to enforce these restrictions? Or are we in the neighborhood going to be left with the possibility of litigating every time there's a problem? Or we have to go and count trucks to prove how many trucks are going out? Do we have to take air samples to prove what kind of dirt is being, do we have to wait till our wells are dry or polluted in some way? Many, many agencies have reviewed these restrictions, and that's what I'm concerned about, the mindset here. The relaxed attitude of Crowe in the beginning has been replaced with a legalistic view that we can do this 20, 40, 100 things, limit ourselves in these ways, and that will be appropriate. I don't think so. I think it's responsibility of this group to take the overview and say, there is just too much going on here that's inappropriate in the neighborhood. There are too many restrictions. They're probably not enforceable without major drastic steps taken by neighbors and people living in the neighborhood. And that's why I would really urge you to just deny this application. You have the capacity to do that. Otherwise, why are we having this hearing? If it's just a matter of how many boxes they can check, administrators could do it, and we wouldn't need to have a committee take a look at the overview. So I urge you to take the overview, to consider everything that's been said and all the detriment that will occur to our community here if this major operation, major dirty, industrial, heavy operation is allowed in our community, and just deny the request for permits. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Sylvia?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment, and I will bring this up later on, but I believe you make an excellent point when you say, how will the restrictions be enforced or controlled? You know, if they have 15 restrictions, 24, 30, whatever, then I will ask that question later on as to how they will be enforced. You will monitor them. That was a good point. Thank you.
May I say, may I respond in a way, Chairman?
Go ahead.
When we began these hearings, people from different state agencies came and were available for questions and so forth, and they're in peer, and they talked about what the requirements were, but when they were questioned, they had no authority or ability or staff to pursue anything. So we in the neighborhood are left with trying to deal with this, and I think we have a really good indication from the early Crowe representatives of what's intended here. And I'm sure that they will be trying to get the maximum advantage out of this pit they can once they have paper, granting them the permission to do that. they can, once they have paper, granting them the permission to do these things. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ma'am, you have three minutes.
My name is Karen Ellison, and I live within a two-mile radius of the proposed Kroll mine in the countryside South subdivision. I'm against this mine for several reasons. First and foremost, the mine threatens the water quality and availability of my water and that of my neighbors. Kroll is proposing to take a vast amount of water from the Deadwood Aquifer, which is a primary source of my home's water. In 2010, my water provider, Colonial Pine Hill Sanitary District, had to replace one of our wells at great expense. It was drawing from the Deadwood Aquifer, and the combined radium 226 and 228 content went beyond the legal limit. I want to prevent this, I want this to be prevented from happening again, please. The proposed mine threatens my property value and that of my neighbors by threatening my water quality and producing noise and dust from blasting at the proposed mine site. I have lived in close proximity of a gravel mine in another state, and the dust and the shaking of the windows from the blasting disrupted the quiet and serenity of my home. The traffic on Route 16 is dangerous enough as is. It's among the most dangerous areas, according to the DOT. Kroll Mine proposes to have a significant number of large, heavy, and slow-moving trucks entering onto and exiting from a blind curve on a hill. It's dangerous enough as is, and it's just going to make it more dangerous. The time of day that this meeting is occurring has prevented a number of my neighbors from attending, but I'd like to add that there is significant opposition for the Kroll operations among them. A little over a year ago, our community collected signatures on a petition against the Kroll Mine, totaling a number well over half of the 185 households in my subdivision. So, I urge you to please do the right thing by the citizens you represent, and protect our water supply, our property values, and the residents and the visitors who travel the Rushmore corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Can you just expand a little bit on your comment relative to the noise, and dust, and blasting of how that's impacted you in the past?
I lived in North Reading, Massachusetts, and there
Okay, how long have you lived here, then?
Here, I've lived, well, in this subdivision, I've lived three years, and I've lived about 12 years in
Okay. So, for where you're living now, has that been an issue?
No.
Good.
I anticipate that in the future, it will be if there are going to be blasting.
Well, if you lived there three years, I believe there's been blasting during that period, huh?
Then we haven't. That hasn't been an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
And how far away are you?
Within a two-mile radius. We're to the northwest.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was just about to ask, is there any more? I kind of figured, I'd seen some more people, so.
PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department, Cody was going through it, and we got some additional items for you, which I'll give you on post-it notes. Mr. Mike Mueller, who was already up, should receive an additional three minutes if he so chooses.
Okay.
Julie Mueller would speak after him, and she would have three minutes. And an additional person, Trevor Went, would receive three minutes, and he would be number 14 on your list.
You said Trevor?
Yes, sir.
Went?
Yes, sir. Is he on there?
He, he is, but he put that he was, well, he checked, no, but then he put in the yield time to David, or to Wigan.
That sounds like a familiar story sometimes. I'm willing to go ahead and give him if there was a communication issue. Is that, is that Trevor Went? Is that correct? I just want to make sure that's, what's your name, sir?
Wigget.
Wigget?
Wigan.
Let me just make my notes here, so I make sure I have the allotted times here, and then I will get back on that. Okay, so, we'll go back to Mike Mueller first, just so we can, did you, would you like three more minutes there, sir? I know we stopped you in the middle of that, but that way we can make sure that it's fair.
Thank you. Rules is rules.
I'm sticking for that.
I maybe would have asked if I had six minutes, because that's what I anticipated.
You did, and I didn't announce it beforehand, so that could have been my mistake, too.
Just to continue on, the rest of the Rapid City Comprehensive Plan, the Growth and Reinvestment Framework talks about principal arterial routes, which this is an arterial route, that's part of that study that was done back in 2012, talking number seven out of 249, says it should carry significant traffic volumes at higher speeds for longer distances. Okay? There's a visual for you. Entrance corridors protect scenic views and natural character, parentheses, restrict intense development, parentheses, includes Highway 16 south of Rapid City. This is verbatim, right out of that plan. Neighborhood area policies, Spring Creek and US Highway 16. Continue limited expansion of the tourism-oriented community area. And item SC-NA1.1C, development planning will enhance characteristics and appearance. That wouldn't be the case. So, since 1983, the tally that was up on the board went to 2017, most of those years, it was 22,000 tons a year coming out of that pit. Last five years, the average is up in the 40,000, some range, that's doubled. So, how many times would we double and end up having tremendous amount of material coming out of there? And I know Mr. Conover's workload must be tremendous, but I can imagine he will have more work with the phone calls and responses, that he may have to run a trip up the hill, or respond to somebody's video, or phone call, of what they're seeing, what they're hearing, what they're, what they're experiencing up there. So, out of respect for his time, that's another consideration. Happened to be made aware of chapter 3.21 in SDCL codified law, and definitions of that, it talks about liability of public entities and public officials. So, 3.3-21-1, our definitions, term, an employee, all current and former employees, and elected, and appointed officers of any public entity, whether classified, unclassified, licensed, or certified, permanent or temporary, whether compensated or not, the term includes employees of all branches of government, including the judicial and legislative branches, and employees of constitutional boards and offices. The term does not include independent contractors. Public entities, as the state of South Dakota, all of its branches and agencies, which statutory body here. Boards and commissions, you are a commission. The terms also include public entities established by law exercising any part of the sovereign power of the state, including but not limited to municipalities, counties, school districts, townships, sewer and irrigation districts, and all other legal entities. The public entities are authorized by law to establish. Those are just definitions of you folks. 3-21-7, no waiver of sovereign immunity. Nothing in this chapter shall be deemed to waive the sovereign immunity of the public entities of the state of South Dakota, or of their employees. So, I don't know what the liability is of a vote for something that's creating a public hazard, but I think that's got a way on your mind as well. Thank you.
Any, any questions for Mr. Mueller?
I, I just have a question. Are you intimating, then, that if we were to approve it, and if there were to be, let's say, a tragic accident, that we personally could or would be held liable? Is that what you're intimating?
It's merely a question. I'm not an attorney. There are several in the room, and they may be, may be talking about it right now.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify what I thought I heard you say. Thank you.
All right. Julie Mueller, would you like to? You have three minutes. Yes, that's what I see. Correct me if I'm wrong, three minutes, is that correct?
That's totally fine. Most everybody has said everything that was on my list, anyway. I am Julie Fry Mueller, I am a representative for District 30, and have been part of Black Hills Concerned Citizens since we first formed. There is a YouTube video on the Black Hills Concerned Citizens that show pups 96 feet long, the twins, which will more than likely be what's used, because it's construction, pulling out. If you can visualize coming up the hill, past founding fathers, and then it curves around, and I'm just going to jump a little bit, the, some of the people talked about the speed limit, we have the little thing flashes, 60 miles an hour, 73, 79, we see all kinds of things that are going, and a 60 mile an hour zone coming down at that intersection. So, they're really flying when they get into the 65 mile an hour zone. And you're going around this curve, and you've got 96 feet, 50 ton, did I say that correctly? Okay. He's a math nerd, what can I say? And you're, you're, we've all had vacations with our kids, I think, and our kids always get along in the backseat of the car. Nobody fights, nobody does anything. The driver
Awesome.
I know your four kids. And if we want to talk about your well, you do live in New Wonderwood. But anyway, if you were to turn around and yell at two of your boys, or something, within 10 seconds, you're, you're dead. You're going to turn around, and you've just now ruined your family vacation. Instead of the scenic byway to Mount Rushmore, we're going to be on every Google thing saying, stay away. And the one thing that I am going to say also is, look at the rally, look at the motorcycles that we have, you guys. So many of them, they'll be splattered. I've talked to the volunteer fire chiefs and stuff, and Don Berger, you know, is a volunteer firefighter as well. I couldn't believe it when they said they, they shoveled the bodies off of the road. Can you imagine any of your loved ones being shoveled off a road, when all of this is totally preventable? Again, it's nothing against mining. My daughter and son-in-law, my son-in-law is, was, was a mining engineer, got his mining engineering degree from School of Mines, and my daughter's an engineer, and, and they worked for the mines up in Minnesota. It's nothing against mining, it's purely location. It is. And then look at all the kids that volunteer, that go for jobs in the summer, the busiest time, tourist season, construction season, big trucks, and your 16-year-old's going to go on up to, used to be Mystery Mountains, it's called something else, or drive up to Keystone, or even to Bear Country, and get a job. And they're 15, or 16, or 17, and they're on their cellphone. Because you all know what happens. We all do. And they're going to be dead. So, I know it's hard, being in peer, sometimes we have to say no to things that you don't want to say no to, but it's nothing against mining. It is strictly location.
Are there any questions?
Thank you for your time.
I actually have a question. You mentioned something about 96 feet, can you tell me about that again?
What did you say?
You mentioned something about 96 feet coming around a corner, and 96 feet.
96.
I want to know which way you're talking about traveling.
Okay, if you, if you're coming up the hill, and Kroll's on this side
Are you coming up, you're talking about coming from?
Going, going south.
From Rapid City.
From Rapid City out. So, you're coming around this hill, and the pups, Don Berger measured them, they're 96 feet long.
Okay, they're
And if you're coming out of that little pit at five miles an hour with all that weight, trying to get across four lanes of traffic in that median, and the video also shows, and there's pictures, where their wheels actually go off the road a little bit on the other side. But there's no way in the world they can get across those four lanes in time where it's safe. And the DOT, I've talked to them, and I noticed that somebody's here, they're not changing the speed limit. So, when do we learn our mistake? After people die? And it's, again, it, please, it's water, it's traffic, it's safety, it's property values for all the homeowners. If they lose their well water, if they lose their water, what are their values? I know that one of you is a real estate agent. Those people can't sell their house.
I have another question.
I can make other answers.
It kind of tacks on what Mike asked earlier about liability. And you brought it up, so that's the reason why I'm going to ask you. You're talking about it's a 60 mile an hour speed zone down there. Kids are on a cellphone, adults are on cellphones. People speed down in that area. Who's liable for that accident?
Well, that's whoever would cause the accident.
Whoever would cause the accident.
But
So, whoever's, whoever is responsible for the accident, or liable for the accident, is the one who causes the accident, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And, but what we were doing was checking on whether or not, and it would, it would affect us in the legislature as well. What, what role do you guys play in trying to make sure the safety of all the citizens should come? You know, first, are you making a good decision? Are you making, what kind of a decision are you making when, when we're trying to present facts to you that could be real-life facts? So, we're just, we're just asking for you to hear us, please.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Sir, you have three minutes.
All right. Good evening. My name is Trevor Went. I just want to piggyback off something Mike was talking about regarding the 2020 Pennington County Comprehensive Plan around transport and circulation. Maintain a safe and efficient transport network for residents and visitors. There was an article, a letter to the editor, posted in Rapid City Journal, March 7, 2016. Gravel pit truck traffic threatens public safety. Visitor, we were traveling to Rapid City on Monday, March 7, and we passed Bear Country and approached the turnoff of the gravel pit. There was one vehicle in front of us, just as that car nearly reached the turnoff, a loaded gravel truck pulled across the median in front of it. Thankfully, the driver swerved out of the way, or all of us would have been involved in a terrible accident. The truck's load wasn't covered, and put out a nice cloud of dust all the way down the hill towards Uptown's Garden. Is this really what Pennington County Commissioners want to happen? I think not. This endangers lives, both with accidents and the terrible dust that is so unhealthy to people who live in the area, and the visitors who come to the Black Hills. I can't imagine that situation with all the trucks and the tourists, along with the locals, who will be traveling south on Highway 16 in the very near future. Visitor from Newcastle, Wyoming. So, as part of the Comprehensive Plan, this operation does not fit with the Comprehensive Plan that's both from the Penning County and also Rapid City. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions for Trevor? Thank you very much, sir.
You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Jeff Wigan, I'm a resident here in Pennington County. Just, I'll be brief, most people have already said everything, you've heard it all a number of times. Gee, I don't intend to be around in 2047, was that it? But, long before that, my granddaughter, who's only three now, will be sure to come visit, and if this goes through, and I go up that road with her, probably slowly, she's going to ask me, and what is that? I'm going to say, honey, don't worry, that was planned. And she's pretty smart, she's not going to accept that as a rational statement. There's references to this as some form of continuation of the old Pete Lean operation, and it's pretty clear that it's not. You know, the old country store turned into a big box store, but it's not. This is a mining operation, not a mining operation on a piece of agricultural land. This is a mining operation, heavy duty. If it wasn't by its nature completely different from what was there before, you wouldn't have all these people here. Pete Lean was fine, and the size that it was. This is different, and you folks have a decision to make about that. That whole area quietly going residential, it's got great tourist sites on that road, it's got all kinds of potential for more of them. The, the cave across the street from Bear Country, it goes on and on. And we can protect that, and make sure that the economy of our county grows on the basis that we already have, without putting a mining operation there. Mining is fine, it's part of our, mining in general is part of our county's strength as well, but that's the wrong place. It doesn't pass a five-year-old's laugh test to say that you planned to put a mining operation in that location. Thank you very much.
Is there any questions for Mr. Wigan? Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much, sir. PJ, are there any other last-minute individuals?
PJ Conover Planning Department Director, there's, uh, Gerald Rare uh, that would like to give, uh, Julie Mueller his time.
Okay. What was his name?
We'll get it spelt into you.
Okay.
Gerald.
All right. And he's given three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this again. Uh, get Julie for our Mueller.
Just a second. Hold on that time. I gotta get back to the right note page.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good. Sorry. Go ahead.
I, I wanted to hit on the tourism dollars real quick. When Senator Lance Russell and Tim Representative Goodwin and I are in Pierre, we sell ourselves as the beautiful part of the state. We're the pretty part of the state. We tell that to everybody. We're the part, part of the state that everybody wants to go to. Um, if people knew that even at the Reptile Gardens in, exit area, that corner was one of the seventh, number seven for accidents. Um, I would hate to see us try to get to number one. We have, we have, I've asked about stoplights down there. They'll never do those, which is probably smart that they won't do them. But they do put them up at three forks during the rally. But I just wanted to let you know that we work really hard to make sure that people come to Mount Rushmore. To, to come to the, to our side of the state, and they generate a lot of tax dollars for us. And we wanna make sure they have a safe, happy, memorable vacation here. And if you could just really, um, kind, let us, any of us know if you have any questions on anything. But we would really appreciate, uh, vote and support, um, the citizens that are here today. Thank you.
Any questions for Julie? Thank you very much. Are there any other individuals last minute? Are there any questions that the commission has at this moment in time before, uh, we move to the applicant's statement?
Will the, will the other side have the same procedure? That they will register how many minutes or so forth?
I believe it's only one, the applicant itself.
Pardon me?
I believe it's only just the applicant himself or his representative. Is there, is there anyone else gonna speak on behalf or in support of, of the applicant of this? I believe it's just gonna be one.
And I just wondered, do they have three minutes? How much time?
The applicant typically gets to present their case. I mean, that's usually what happens when, when, even when we have them during our regular meeting. So they may take a little bit more time. I don't expect that they'll take the total amount of time that all the, uh, opponents have taken.
I see. Uh, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we move forward?
Mr. Sheriff.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
There's been a lot of talk about the, the traffic, and I, I guess I'd just like to clarify or get clarification, uh, perhaps from staff, maybe Brittany, but it's my understanding and reading all of the documents that the primary access for the pit is, is, you know, basically in the straightaway that exists between the, the pit itself and Bear Country. Is that, is that accurate?
Okay. Can you come up here and answer that question, Brittany? So that we hear it.
Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor, yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
And then, uh, the access that's in the middle of the curves, uh, so to say, going around the corner, that's, is that an emergency access?
It is, but currently, right now, it's blocked off. There's a bunch of vegetation, trees and things like that piled up right there, so you can't get through there right now.
Okay. All right.
Does that clarify what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. The applicant or the representative for the applicant is welcome to come forward.
Thank you. I'm Tom Brady of the Lynn Jackson Law Firm and, uh, Representative Kroll. I've been involved in this project for four years now. And, uh, here today are, uh, Brian Martin and Kyle Reisinger and Matt McPhee, who are, uh, major individuals involved in the operations of, uh, the Kroll operations in the Black Hills area. And so the technical components of it, if there's questions in that regard, we may need to refer and defer to those with the expertise. I, uh, would like to first comment, uh, the summary that Michelle Hoffman provided to you of the historical procedures and things of that nature. I, I concur with her summary of that as to what brings us here today. And that, um, ironically, those who have challenged your three-twenty ordinance, if they are successful and the court finding it to be invalid, then under the same legal theory, your five-oh-seven is invalid and we don't need a permit from anybody. Which brings me back to a point that has been uh, frustrating for Kroll. But they have been a good corporate citizen. And they have been attempting to dot the i's, cross the t's, and abide by your rules and do everything that your planning office has asked of them to do everything in a very appropriate manner, regardless of the validity of your ordinances. They've, they've strived to, uh, provide all the documentation and information that anybody has ever asked of them. And they have not only met all minimums, but they have exceeded uh, the requirements in many, many material respects. They, uh, they are here now. They're going to be here decades from now. They understand the limestone industry. They understand concerns that citizens have. They understand their responsibilities to be good citizens in the communities that they are in and to have operations. They no more want harm to come to the Black Hills or the community or to any citizen or any visitor than anyone else in this realm. That's the last thing they want. And they're going to, they're going to run their operations with that thought in mind and responsibility in mind. I can respect many of the comments here today uh, of concern. But also one has to be cautioned that we need to deal with facts. We need to deal with science, engineering, reality. And I, I don't, I don't condemn those that are opposed to this proposal. But I, unfortunately, much of many, uh, lack in due respect the information that's available and the science and, uh, the data there. And so I hope I alleviate some of their concerns as I present to you the information that I have. Because, uh, there are legitimate concerns raised, but I think, uh, oh, they do not have the merit that they fear may exist. Kroll and these gentlemen here have worked with, uh, uh, Michelle and Brittany and, and, uh, PJ, uh, for years, and we, we respect uh, the department. We feel, uh, uh, well, they're darn good. Let me just put it that way. They've done a very exhaustive, uh, inquiry. They've been up there and they've inspected the site on many occasions. They've been, been up there to inspect after, uh, if there were a complaint. They, uh, uh, they know their materials. And we have great respect for them because they have, uh, in fairness, put us through uh, the course. And, uh, and we feel that we have fulfilled all obligations. And that's why I do believe that, uh, they fully support and recommend the approval of this permit. Kroll is dedicated to the best management practices and, uh, uh, at, at minimum standards. And you will see when you look through the, the report of things that Kroll has done beyond that which is available in the area because of their interactions, uh, and, uh, multi-state, uh, operations. And if you look at the, uh, the, the big report and all the other underlying details that are in there, the massive documents, you'll further see substantial stuff of which I will touch upon as we discuss what's going on here. But we also need to put things in reasonable perspective. You know, Kroll is requesting mining permits, construction permit and authorization under three-twenty and five-oh-seven. But ultimately, it's all substantially the same data and information and considerations. And yet it, it is also, uh, non-conforming use. It's been in operation for nearly sixty years. And so it has been operating, is operating, and will operate uh, because of it being a mining operation. But that's that. They want to obtain your permits to proceed without conflict, without dispute. There's a lot of concern on traffic. But let's again, put that in perspective as well. Using approximate numbers, there's approximately nine thousand vehicles per day on this road. On an average, some days significantly more, some days significantly less. But that's the daily average. There's six hundred trucks in that nine thousand on this road. And we're talking about Kroll having sixteen of six hundred. And we're not talking about significant increases because there's been fifty thousand tons of material uh, mined in the last several years, averaging twenty-two thousand over the years and up to a hundred thousand in two thousand one. Which equals what the maximum potential there is. So when we talk about these numbers of, of traffic and of trucks, these trucks have already been counted from historical operations. Okay? Now, in regard to traffic, Kroll has been working with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for over three years. This is a South Dakota highway under their exclusive jurisdiction. And they're very, uh, the DOT is very cognizant of, uh, the Pearly Coring and of the operations. Kroll, at the request of South Dakota Department of Transportation, did a traffic study and provided that to them. Uh, we're working with Stacey Bartlett, who is here. We're working with Mike Carlson, who is here, working with anyone else in the department they wish us to work with to make sure that our operations, uh, fulfill and meet the safety requirements of the South Dakota Department of Transportation and State of South Dakota. And we are subject to their oversight and requirements. And so they could, they could shut our access off in a blink. If they were of the opinion that we were creating an unreasonable traffic hazard out there by our operations. We know that. Kroll is well aware of their authority. And we have an agreement with them that we report to them our operations and they can monitor them. They also are complaint-driven. And if they get complaints, we know who hears next. And we know who has the ultimate jurisdiction. And how they can regulate or shut that access off or do other requirements. So the last thing Kroll wants is to create a safety hazard out there. The last thing it's going to do is to dump trucks out there, uh, at the maximum volumes of traffic. They too know when the maximum traffic volumes are out there. So given the recommendations and restrictions that we have, uh, been given of hours of operation, I, I can assure you that Kroll is smart enough to regulate their, their traffic to the extent they can, to have their trucks operating at the lower traffic, uh, timeframes, because that's just simple, good business sense. Cause they don't want a complaint either. They are going to, uh, monitor what's going out there with the South Dakota Department of Transportation, the local office and the state office. And so yes, I, I respect and Kroll respects and hears these concerns expressed by the, the folks here. And they know that somebody is watching them. And they know that if they create a hazard out there, they're going to hear about it. And their two million dollar investment they have in their operation out there isn't gonna be worth very much if they can't operate. The traffic accidents that have been out there are documented. Two-thirds of them are deer collisions. Uh, I don't have it all here, but they aren't at this intersection. They aren't at this location. And Kroll is gonna make every reasonable effort they can that there isn't one. Cause that's in their interest and in the public's interest that they do all reasonable acts to avoid that. The other major issue that has been repeatedly addressed is water. Lack of water, dirty water, bad water are all legitimate concerns. In two thousand sixteen, Kroll applied to the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resources, the South Dakota Water Management Board for a water permit. And submitted their application and all supporting documentation for a water well permit as such water source will be important in their operations to mitigate, to mitigate dust, uh, to, uh, uh, provide the necessary water resources they need for their operations to run a better quarry than's ever been run there before. Because there isn't that water source out there. And so when they get that water source, they're gonna be able to do things far better than has historically been done in dust mitigation and things of that nature. So in any event, uh, Kroll made their application to the South Dakota Water Management Board for their water permit. And, uh, that application was challenged. It was challenged by, uh, Mr. Dwayne Abada, Mr. Pat Hall, Mr. Don Berger, and Mr. Barrett Wendy, who were represented by attorneys Mike Hickey and Kelsey Barker. Now, we've heard from Mr. Abada today. We've heard from Mr. Berger today. Well, those individuals were two of the parties that challenged the water permit uh, for Kroll. We had a public hearing in Pierre. It's a contested hearing in Pierre. And hours of testimony were presented. And after the conclusion of that hearing, parties were allowed to present their proposed findings of fact and conclusions of parties were allowed to present their proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law, meaning what do you think the evidence said and what the conclusion ought to be? And then the state Water Management Board adopted findings of fact, conclusions of law, and entered an order. And in the findings of fact and conclusions of law and final decision of the South Dakota Water Management Board, this hearing dealt with radon and radium in the water. There was testimony presented at this hearing. Mr. Abada and his group also presented the testimony of Dr. Davis. And the other testimony, uh, by Mr. Bueller of, uh, the department. And a lot of information. And that board who has exclusive jurisdiction over water rights and to issue water permits concluded that the fears expressed about radon and radium did not have merit and concluded the aquifer was adequate to issue a water permit to Kroll. And those findings, conclusions, and final decision of the South Dakota Water Management Board were presented. And the individuals that challenged it did not appeal that decision. It is a final decision. And so these issues have been resolved. Now, what I hear here today is people concerned about their wells. Well, let me tell you. Uh, Kroll's water permit is, uh, July of two thousand sixteen. Anybody that has a water permit predating that that has a adequate, uh, supply, if Kroll interferes with their adequate supply, as the South Dakota D N R Water Management defines the terms, they get shut off. Okay?
Who gets shut off?
Kroll gets shut off. Anybody that has a prior water right. Now, the state has determined that there is adequate water out there. But if it would prove that there isn't, their valve gets shut off. Okay? So if anybody that has a well out there that thinks that Kroll's use of, uh, of the water that they have a permit for somehow adversely affects them, they can call the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resources and the Water Management Board and lodge their complaint because they have all the records down there of all the wells and the drillings and the information. So that's their protection. You know, there's a question about, uh, who does the enforcement? Well, that's the enforcement end on, yes, sir.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, isn't that rather difficult to prove? I mean, you have all these various wells out there. They're all drawing from various incendiary aquifers. And yes, I realize we've heard a lot of science and I tend to, I tend to decide in favor of science, but it seems to me that generally something like this is pretty damn hard to prove. They could, Kroll could blame somebody else, some other element. I mean, to definitively prove that kind of circumstance, it seems to me to be difficult. Now, I, I turn around the other way and I will say that many of those people who complained about water circumstances there, I think would have a difficult time proving that the water circumstances might be in any way, you know, because of a, a large industrial user like Kroll. I mean, I think this whole science is pretty hard to nail down. Cause I think, and so I, I, what I'm saying is I don't know if people really would have, uh, some kind of relief there.
Well, I don't think it's difficult to prove at all.
Oh, you know, okay.
I think it'd be quite simplistic because, uh, they're in the Deadwood Aquifer and, uh, if you're in the Deadwood Aquifer and you don't have water, uh, where's your well? What's your drawdown on the well? Uh, what's, uh, is your well adequate? And, uh, if so, then they're shut off. Now, nobody has the right to go in and drill a, a well to the very tippy top of an aquifer and use the first, a gallon of water off the top and the rest of the aquifer can't be used because they can't get their gallon. So the state defines what an adequate well is. And it's very simple to prove because they have drawdowns. They've got cones. Those folks know what they're doing. It's impressive group of people in, 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 uh, in that office. They have, uh, numerous engineers and, uh, an immense, uh, group of, uh, exceptional staff.
Well, is there a hydrologist here who could speak to those, that science or that?
Well, I'm not a hydrologist.
No, you're a good lawyer, but I don't know how good a hydrologist you are.
Well, you're kind.
Jim, I think, I think if that's the case, we, we should let him finish his presentation and then, and then find out if that's the case.
But the practical matter, sir, is that's an area of jurisdiction of the state of South Dakota to issue water permits and to control the water rights and to manage that. Okay? So I don't think it's appropriate in due respect that this board or the county commission or any other board attempt to interject their authority over a state agency that has exclusive control and jurisdiction over all of the waters in the state of South Dakota. Because their knowledge is immense. They, they know their business.
Mr. Jerrit?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I just would like to follow up on that question slash comment. You know, I too had kind of a similar, uh, thought and I understand that we can maybe talk about this more later, but while we're on this, it's, you know, the way I read your permit, the well owner under this permit shall control its withdrawals. So there is not a reduction of needed water supplies in adequate domestic wells or inadequate wells having prior water rights. So when I, when I read that, my question to you or to Kroll is that how will you control your withdrawals so as not to reduce these water supplies? I mean, to me, the burden is on Kroll to control their withdrawal so not to make an impact. So I guess at some point before we're done today, I'd like to know, you know, kind of precisely what is your plan here for you to comply with this condition of your permit?
Uh, I can give you a general overview of that. We, uh, Kroll has a water permit up to a certain quantity. Now, obviously they will not use more than they need for their purposes. On the other hand, as they use their water, any amount of water, if there's an adverse effect to another appropriation, and, and, and there's two of them you identified, one is domestic which has priority in South Dakota and those that have prior water rights. Okay? So if there is a adequate domestic or an adequate prior water right user whose flows are reduced by virtue of water used by Kroll, Kroll has to reduce their water usage or stop their usage.
But I can tell you, being somewhat familiar with the D N R, they've got a great staff of people, as you said, but they don't go out and, and monitor water levels in domestic personal wells. They don't go down, they don't go out and do drawdown studies. So whose responsibility is it to monitor the water levels in the surrounding wells to ensure that there's no impact here?
Well, it's a, it's a cause-effect, uh, proposition.
But the way this states, the way this states is that you shall control it so as not to cause a reduction. So you don't have to wait for the reduction and then do something. You need to control it so there isn't a reduction.
But that's the precise language in every permitted use. You can't, you can't go monitor things to see what's going on because you don't know what you're monitoring or where you would monitor.
Well, that's not true. You monitor the well, the water level in the wells. And I would start with the closest one, Bear Country. And if there's, if it's starting to have an impact there, then you can bet that over time that impact will uh, expand beyond that area in the Deadwood. So I mean, we don't need to talk about that or argue about it now. I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm just put that in the, in your minds that I'd like some understanding there of what is your, is what Kroll's plan to do to comply with this portion of the permit.
They intend to comply with the state requirements and to, uh, answer to the South Dakota Water Management Board.
And I'd like to know specifically the way the actions will be to comply with this.
They're going to use water in a manner so it doesn't harm, uh, priority uses. That's all I can say. Because that's the same thing with the city of Rapid City water permit. They don't go water, uh, monitor somebody else's, uh, well. They have water permits to draw water and if their water draws adversely affect somebody else, then you have to manage your use of the water so as not to adversely affect priority users. That's South Dakota water law.
Well, we can talk later about this.
Okay.
Now, other material issues. And again, uh, where I was, was that that permit was issued and it was not appealed and it's final and it's adjudicated. There's many other issues that, uh, Kroll deals with out there. Uh, one of the things raised is, uh, dust, noise, blasting. Some of that is all, um, interrelated or substantially interrelated. And dust is regulated by the state air quality permit. Now, in addition to that, not only has Kroll, must Kroll meet those requirements of the state air quality permit, but they've gone a step beyond. It's not promises of what they're going to do. They've actually done things. As an example, their entry road, they've paved almost a half mile of that road, uh, into the quarry area. Why? Because that's good business practice that eliminates a half mile of gravel road that generates dust from any traffic going in or out. That's dust control. They've done that. No one required them to do that. No one asked them to do that, but that's a demonstration of the type of corporate citizen they are of what they do. What they regularly do at, uh, other operations. If there's dust issues, they, uh, apply mag chloride, which is a dust suppressant. That's nothing that's required of them to do, but that's something that they do as a business practice. They don't want any more complaints than you want complaints or the county wants complaints. Uh, the use of water in certain, uh, applications for dust control. Uh, blasting. There's another, uh, area that, uh, they've gone beyond. Yeah, as, uh, Brittany Moller, uh, mentioned in that there's no licensing or, or requirements for blasters in South Dakota. Well, in Kroll's experience at the state of Wyoming, they do have licensing. They do have requirements and they have relations with those qualified individuals and it's those individuals that they're going to bring here to do what blasting has done at this site. Why is that important? Well, first of all, it's a step beyond what they have to do. But it's a demonstration of being a good corporate citizen and doing things right. And in that process, uh, they're, they're subject to the A T F regulations. They're subject to, um, they're going to do noise measurements. They're going to do seismic, uh, measurements. Uh, they do a nine-one-one non-emergency advance call so that, uh, those resources are apprised of impending event. They do an advanced contact of adjoining properties. So they pre-advice everybody when it's going to happen. And then they monitor both seismic and noise, uh, effects to make sure it complies with any and all requirements. So they're very proactive to mitigate any impact, if not totally eliminate. Um, you know, mentioning, uh, permitting, um, they, they have a laundry list of permits. They've acquired the mine license from the state of South Dakota. That was an application to the state of South Dakota for, uh, uh, mine, mining operation. Uh, that was issued December twenty-four, two thousand fifteen. No one challenged that, uh, permit and they have that mining permit from the state of South Dakota. They obtained the general permit for stormwater discharges associated with industrial activities issued by the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resource. They have obtained the, uh, the South Dakota Department of Environment Natural Resource general permits to operate under the air quality operating permit program and surface water discharge systems for non-metallic mineral processing plants. They've developed a stormwater pollution prevention plan as required by your ordinance. And they've obtained all local, state and federal erosion control and runoff management permits. Then they've also presented bonds for performance. And so Kroll is doing it the right way. And asking you to review how they have presented their information to see if it complies. Let's look at it scientifically. Let's look at it factually. Let's look at it objectively. This is not an operation like there is in West Rapid. This is a fly spec size operation compared to what you have in West Rapid. Or any one of the operations in West Rapid is a fly spec to it. We're talking fifty to a hundred thousand tons a year. And what we are talking about is producing limestone that is going to be provided one way or another. So when limestone is needed in Keystone, trust me, there's going to be a truck loaded with limestone headed for Keystone, whether it comes from this quarry or something from West Rapid. And, uh, so this is a good operation. You know, there, there was concern that we're going to tear the mountains down. Uh, no, that's not going to happen. You can look at your aerial photos and see the existing disturbed area. That's something that Kroll did not do. That's something the state of South Dakota did, Pennington County did, and other operators. And, uh, there are others that are responsible for some reclamation, but with the permitting that Kroll is going to get, uh, they will do the reclamation. A step they've gone above and beyond is the topsoil that stripped. They're having, uh, loads of material, uh, uh, to make compost or it's a, it's a wood product that they mix with their topsoil to expand the volume that they have to do a more better job of, of, uh, reclamation because that's to add soils to what is already there. They end up with a better end product. That's in their interest to have good reclamation and to have successful reclamation. Because when they're done with the mine in the quarry site, it is going to be used for other purposes. Housing, something else. But right now it's a limestone mine. There is, uh, you know, until, until Kroll made its application here about three years ago for a permit, I would venture to say there wasn't a handful of people that even knew that pit was there. Cause you can't see it. And you're not going to be able to see it. Because if you look at the, their, uh, plans of how they're going to, uh, proceed, it's kind of like a postage stamp. You mine this area. You mine this area, and you take the topsoil off and stuff, and you reclaim that, and then you go over here and mine this, and so you rotate and go around. Well, the stuff that's as closest to Highway sixteen has already been disturbed, and you will see that there's, uh, a setback on their property, and there's existing pine trees that are not going to be removed. It's not going to be clear cut. Those are part of the buffer to the extent that, uh, there's visual aspects, there's birmingham and seeding and stuff like that to be done. And it's, so it's not going to be a visual as you might see in other areas in this county. Or can see in other areas in this county. Again, that demonstrates their commitment to do it right. That's part of, uh, the stuff that, uh, they've worked through with, uh, your department. And so there is buffers, there is, uh, dust control, there is noise control. The crushing is only going to be there on occasion, it's not a constant operation. They're not going to mine that much in any given year, at any given time. They will move in, they will blast, they will crush, they'll pile, they'll maintain, they'll reclaim, they'll haul. And do that just periodically, and within the constraints of certain hours on certain days. Another issue that, uh, uh, it's, it's, it's not in here, but is their, uh, practice is that, um, when there's a high wind event, uh, there's a DNR notice of high wind event. And they voluntarily shut their operations down during those events so as to mitigate the risk of, uh, dust being transported that they're not able to contain to other areas or other properties. So that's another thing they do as a good community citizen is they suspend operations during any high wind, uh, event. And, um, you know, during their crushing, during their screening, there's inspections. Your Pennington County, uh, folks have been up there to inspect, they're invited to inspect, they can come and inspect whenever they want. We have no fear. Kroll wants to comply and will comply, and they fully expect that they must comply. So with all that said, whether you're approving the permit under three-twenty, under five-oh-seven, or under any deal, the point is Kroll is dotting their i's, crossing their t's, and doing a class operation, doing it right at the Pearly Quarry that's been in operation for sixty years. And they will continue to do it right, because they know they must, and more importantly, they want to. And therefore will. So with that, I would, uh, entertain any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Brady? Just, just a moment. Oh, you can, yeah, you can talk to your lawyer. Is there any questions?
Oh, sure. At the, uh, my name is Brian Marchand, I'm general manager for Kroll Incorporated. So, uh, I'm, uh, I'm pleased to be here, and I'd like to answer some of your questions if you have some on operations and what we are as a company. Uh, I would like to talk to Ms. Catherine Johnson. She had a, raised a good point about how you monitor the, the water that's in that aquifer to know when, uh, other people's water is going to be affected by our operations. And the way, if I remember it, ma'am, okay, is when we went to the water, uh, board in Pierre, there was a lot of talk with their, their expert about how they could, uh, know when the aquifer had substantial water for our operations. And what they said is they had a monitoring well, I believe about a mile and a half, somewhere up.
Point seven miles away.
Yeah, so you're aware of it. And I think they were, they, they could tell how much water or sta, or static water level there was in that well. And if it drops below a certain point, then we'd be the one, the ones that would get kicked off first, cause we're industrial, all that stuff. So yes, we would be pulled off. I, I don't want to, we don't want to affect these people. I, I honestly, I want to, we want to coexist with everybody. I want to be, I don't want people to even know I'm there, to be honest. That, that's, that's what we strive for. I don't want to be raping and pillaging the land, we don't do that. We just, we just want to support our business, produce jobs, pay taxes, and get along with our neighbors. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
Any further questions? Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you for that, uh, explanation about that. You know, it's still though, um, I'm, he, I'll just tell you what I'm thinking. By the time it reaches that monitoring well, two point seven miles away, i- impact will already have occurred in the, in the area of the aquifer between that monitoring well and, you know, your well. And so, you know, one of the, eh, the way I read this is that there is some responsibility to control it bef, so the impacts don't occur, rather than waiting for the impacts to occur and then make some response. And so, you know, one of the, at least in, in, in ordinance three-twenty, there is a, um, provision that, um, that we can add a condition to require baseline monitoring of wells within a certain distance, certain radius. And it, it seems to me that it would be wise, uh, both from, um, you know, from your perspective as well as the public's perspective, to at least have, to have some baseline monitoring on the Bear Country well, which is your neighbor there, so that you can really start understanding if you had, so if there's any suggestion later on, you have some baseline data as to the water level in that well. And so I, I will be making that, um, recommendation, that a condition be added to that effect, um, to try to, you, we can't require you to monitor that well throughout, but we can require some baseline data, um, so that you know where you started. And then there's, the problem occurs though, because there's always natural fluctuation, and there's a hydrograph somewhere in these materials that show, you know, through the last, I don't know, so many years, it's, the, the water level in the Dead, in the Deadwood fluctuates about sixty-five feet. And so it's not going to be perfect baseline because there's these natural fluctuations, but I think it would be wise to, um, acquire that kind of baseline data.
I, I agree.
Yeah. I have one other question if I.
Go ahead.
And, um, I, I'd like to understand the reclamation piece a little bit better, because, um, how, you know, you, you know, the way you do this by chunks, which is, that's how mining does. How can you reclaim the stuff that's, you'd be driving over the stuff you mined last year when you're going to be mining the stuff you mined this year? So how can you do reclamation when you have to use the mined area to get to the new face?
Well, you're always a, you're a year or two behind, so what you do is you take off the topsoil and overburden, and you move it off, put it onto the, the stuff that's two years behind.
Right.
And you sa, um, seed and restore that, that's what you do. And, and that's where, that's where the current property is lacking, no one's done that, and we can't do it because we, oh, we haven't got any revenue on the property yet, because it's not, we can't mine there, right?
Right.
So that's, that's the problem. You, we, we like to do an acre for an acre, you know, if we can get to that point eventually, but, uh, we're not there yet, so I don't have anything.
So you just said something, if you don't mind, unless you have anything further. You just said something right now, and maybe I didn't realize this, currently you can't reclaim that property because you don't have the mining permit. Is that, is that what I just heard you say?
I have no, I would like to, I'd really like to do it, but I just don't have it right now. You know, I don't have the permit, I don't have any revenue coming off to do it yet. You know, I, I don't have a mine there.
You have money to, to do the work. Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood how you said that.
If I may. You're, you're not assuming liability to reclaim the disturbed area as it exists now. So what would you, what would you, you, so in other words, what you're talking about is just reclaiming the acres that were disturbed to, what is, two thousand seventeen, when you did some mining, or is that what you're talking about?
Kyle. He, this is Kyle Freisinger, he's my, he's our production.
Okay.
So he, he's the smart guy with the mining part.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Go ahead and give your name first.
Kyle Freisinger with Kroll.
Well, I'm just, eh, eh, but, I mean, you know, I just, I just want to make sure I understand the reclamation plan in terms of, you know, how you would do that, but then Travis brought up about, did hear you write when you were talking about you'd like to go in and reclaim some now, but there's circumstances that haven't allowed that. So then my question was, so what exactly are you talking about that you'd like to reclaim now? Because you're not, you're not assuming responsibility for reclaiming the disturbed part that happened before you purchased the property.
Right.
So are you just talking about the portions that you mined out in that brief period of time and?
Kroll's responsibility, um, we report our disturbance annually, so we've only disturbed a small portion of that mine. Um, other bonds are out there with the state of South Dakota that indicate that they will reclaim. So if an agreement would be made between Kroll and the other operators, obviously we'd like to, um, be in control of that quarry. Having, uh, a competitor, having any, um, access or responsibility there, uh, I believe we'd just work it out with the other operators, and we would take over their responsibility. But as of right now,
I see.
Uh, it has not happened.
Yeah, okay.
Because they have responsibility of the areas that have already been mined, so really you can't go in there because they're responsible for cleaning that area up or reclaiming that area.
Right, I mean, other operators have been in there, disturbed the property, mined it, um, they put their own bond up there, and according to South Dakota law, they have a reclamation responsibility.
Right.
Uh, somebody does. So as of right now, uh, two other bonds exist for that property.
And they have not been held accountable to do this?
Well, that would be up to the state of South Dakota. They have a bond that is out there, as with any mining operation, with, uh, the DNR, there are, uh, on the permits, there is a life on there. So I guess to answer your question, is there someone enforcing reclamation on active mines? Um, to my knowledge, there's not.
I see.
But are you working that area? I mean, is that area being worked?
That area's been mined out.
Okay, so that area's been mined out, there's no work going on there?
No limestone there to mine.
Okay, and to the best of my, our knowledge or your knowledge, there's no, been no complaint to have it reclaimed? Or, and I'm just asking these questions so that I understand, because y'all are operating in there now, are you wanting them to come in and reclaim that area?
Pardon me?
Are you, eh, is Kroll wanting them to come in and reclaim that area? Have y'all made a complaint for them to come do that?
We haven't discussed it as a company as far as other operators finishing their reclamation. Cause obviously, uh, to force someone into reclaim it, and then for us to re-disturb it, doesn't make any sense.
So in Kroll's perspective, you don't want them to reclaim it, so that way you can continue to work it?
There are areas that need to be reclaimed, that we will not disturb or use. So there is areas that is unreclaimed currently that we would use for stockpiles, for example, and loadout.
So why wouldn't you want them to come in and reclaim those areas?
Uh, we probably would, we just haven't discussed it as a company.
How long have they have sat there unclaimed? Unreclaimed?
That, the property has been roughly the same perimeter for years.
I wonder why they put up.
I mean, we, we've been in the mining permit in this process for three and a half years. So our goal is to get a mining permit. Our goal would be to, uh, achieve responsibility for the site, but as of today, we don't have that permit.
So if you, if you received the permit and you received responsibility for that site, how soon would you, as a company, do reclamation on the areas that needed the reclamation?
Um, it's in our reclamation plan. We had a initial expansion, I think, believe of eight acres, it was discussed today. Um, we would get back to an acre per acre, uh, acre disturbed, for every acre disturbed, we would, we would re- reclaim an acre, so that would be our goal.
In, in what period of time?
Uh, well, we would expand the quarry, and Brittany went over that, I believe it was eight acres, and then after, uh, as the years progressed, we would go, every acre disturbed, we would reclaim one acre or more.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead, Kathy.
This is on a different topic, but, um, what's the discharge? So you're, you're using the water from the well, uh, for your crushing operation and dust and so on. Do you have a sense of how much you'll be discharging versus how much will evaporate? I mean, just give, give me a sense of proportions here.
I don't have. I mean, our, we'll have a water well, we'll have, uh, onsite storage, which we use twenty-thousand gallon tanks, um, that water will be pumped into water trucks and enclosed tanks for dust control, water spray, things like that. So it, it just really does depend. Um, as far as a water truck spraying water on the ground, how much goes into evaporation versus, you know, staying on the ground, I, I don't have that.
Well, what I was wondering, so, but, so essentially, so is it, do, do you have a sense that of all the water that gets consumed, most of it either will evaporate or infiltrate, and very little will be excess and run off? Or is it going to be the other way around? Most of it runs off and a smaller, less than half evaporates and infiltrates?
Most of it will be consumed with very little runoff.
Okay.
We have a stormwater permit, which, um, in that permit, we're not allowed to discharge off our property. Allowing water to discharge off our property would be a violation of the permit, and it would, it would be extremely wasteful, ob, obviously, so, um, most of it will be consumed. We will not create any ponds, any open storage, uh, and anything like that. It usually just, you just spray it like you took garden hose, you spray it on the ground and just to keep the dust down, and then maybe three, four hours later, it's evaporated, and you come back and do the same thing, that's what happens.
All right.
Any further questions? All right, seeing them, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, originally, we wanted to do, oh, sir, do you have anything else, or you?
Well, I, it sounded like to me I was released.
You are, okay, I just, you walked back up to the mic, so I didn't know if you had a final say there, so. Uh, originally, we planned to take a break at, uh, five-thirty, it is now six-oh-five. I would, um, unless anybody has anything specific that, that we need to address right now, I would, uh, entertain a motion for recess for half an hour so we can, uh, take a break, process what we've had. I would like to really get my thoughts together, because I've got tons of notes. Um, and so I'd entertain a motion to recess, uh, second. Reset. Motion and second, all in favor, signify, well, let me just verify this. Are we good with returning back at, uh, six, uh, forty?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, we will re-convene at six-forty. At six-forty, I just need a motion to call the meeting back to order?
So moved.
Second, motion is second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are back in session. Just put a reminder out there, if you come up to the microphone, just make sure you lift the microphone up, especially if you're tall, that way we can get a better recording and hear you, so. All right, and now that we are back in session, are there any questions for any staff, any of the presenters, any of the public that's still around? Um, commission, this is the time we'll, uh, um, have some discussion if there's any questions that we have.
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Sandy.
And it's directed to, um, the attorney.
Okay.
Sir, you indicated that there had been research done, um, the traffic on Highway sixteen, and you indicated there were nine thousand vehicles per day, six hundred of which were trucks. And I wonder, were those trucks merely traveling, or were they traversing, you know, across the highway? Were they turning off, or were they merely traveling and being counted?
They, it would be under the traffic counts and where the counters were, so whether they were turning left, right, going all the way through, coming back, they're, they're just counted just like a car.
Yeah, and, and that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Are there any further questions while Mr. Brady's up here? All right. Any other questions for any other agency or individual that's here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to hear from Department of Transportation.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, I can ask us some specific questions or?
You drew the short straw, so you get to come up there first, huh?
So far, so far, we'll see how well I do. If I don't do very well, I'll, someone will kick.
You'll punt.
Can I, can I interrupt if I need to?
Can I, can I interrupt if I need to?
Sure, sure. Sorry, we just need you to state your name.
Do you want the map? Do you want the, on the screen and all?
Which, the map of the pit?
Yeah.
That'd be fine. I'm sure we may actually have to ask for other maps, too.
With Highway sixteen on it, I think that'd be helpful. Yeah, you know, so there, of course, there's been a lot of discussion on the, um, Highway sixteen and the safety issues and the increased traffic and truck and stuff. And, uh, so I guess my overall general question is I'd just like to hear at this, you know, at this juncture, what the DOT's view on, on the safety issues are and what changes, if any, will be required out there and so on. And then, and then I have a few specific kind of questions that, um, um, you know, maybe we can get into later. But if you could just kind of get us your perspective now.
Sure. I'm Mike Carlson. I'm the Rapid City Area Engineer for the Department of Transportation. Uh, we're actually studying the corridor right now and we're, we're studying from Cathedral Drive all the way out to Keystone Y. Uh, it's going to be a year, year and a half study just to see what that corridor impacts are right now. We do know that we have some, some intersections that are creating us some concerns, including Necky Oak Road, like people have discussed. Uh, also, uh, Catron and sixteen, which is also high accidents. So we're looking to decide what we need to do in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years as, as traffic does increase, as we get more and more pressure on this highway. Um, we've also discussed the Pearly Pit and, and what impacts on us. And we've had several discussions in the department as to what we need to do to mitigate those, those risks. Um, anytime you have an intersection on a highway, there is an increased risk for accidents. It's the department's responsibility to figure out how do we mitigate those risks? And, and who's responsible for, to, to pay for those risks as well.
So, you know, um, you know, so from my perspective, um, you know, my understanding anyway, and I guess this comes from, uh, the response that, that Department of Transportation, uh, had when they had the, uh, you know, your, um, request for comment. It, it talks about that there's, um, if traffic characteristics of access to state highway changes, South Dakota DOT requires a landowner to contact department or, you know, on and on and on. And then there's some criteria specifically that require, um, they have to notify the department and that the department can require some changes. So do you view this, and if, if this were to be approved and mining were to commence, uh, as, as proposed? Do, do you view that as, um, as a change in traffic characteristics?
We, what, what, what you're referring to actually is, is either our, our administrative rules or our codified law. And we have approaches, access, locations all through our state highway system. And often field entrances turn into commercial property. Once, once a, a access has changed its use or once, uh, once a, uh, access has increased its use, we will ask the landowner as to what his intent is, what the increase is, and then we'll figure out how to mitigate that, um, if, if, if we need to.
So in this case, does it, does this, does this proposal, does it constitute any of those changes so that you would ask the landowner?
Um, depending on how much material he hauls out there. You know, i- if he hauls out fifty thousand tons a, a year, probably not. Um, if he gets up to a hundred thousand, very possibly we'd ask him to mitigate something.
You know, from, um, and just so you know, I live up toward Hill City, so I'm on the other side of this. But, you know, when I look at, um, the history of this and the last, uh, four or five years, um, John Tally was doing the, removing the aggregate. And, you know, and, you know, he's our neighbor and Plaza Snow and so on. So, you know, I asked him about that and he was saying that most of his trucks went west, you know, toward Hill City. So he rarely would do those, you know, crossing all lanes of traffic to turn down the highway. So my understanding in this one is that in most of the trucks, in this case, will actually, you know, have to cross all the lanes and, and head toward Rapid City. I mean, does that in itself, is that enough of a change so that it would require you to, you know, talk about what can be done? Because it's, I mean, it's a different traffic pattern, even though the volume of material might be roughly the same.
Right, and those are, those are discussions we've had because we, we knew that John was hauling out and, and for the most part, for years, the, the material was going to the west. Now probably a lot of materials are going to come to the east. That is a change. Uh, because now, um, you are impacting the eastbound lanes as opposed to the westbound lanes. So we, we've discussed how to mitigate those risks and are they severe enough that we need to mitigate them? So we've been in discussions with Kroll as to you reach this threshold, this is what we need you to do. Or before you reach this threshold or as you approach this threshold, here's what we want to do to mitigate those, those risks. And, and we've been discussing with Kroll what, what to do. And since this pit has been in existence since nineteen sixty-six, we don't feel that probably all the responsibility, all the financial responsibility belongs to Kroll. Some does, and so we're, we're in negotiations how much the state's willing to pay, the department's willing to pay, and how much Kroll's going to pay.
Go ahead.
So I like, this is just kind of a technical question, but I, I'd like to know the answer. Yeah, because I don't know the right, so when it, when the, like that traffic study and they refer to line of sight, what, does that mean, so you have enough, you can see and you have enough distance so that you can, if a truck's there, you can stop?
It's not only that, it's, it's, yeah, the line of sight means you, you, you recognize the vehicle. You have time to see the speed of the vehicle and you have time to decide if you, a decision time, so you can make a, a safe maneuver back onto the highway. That's all, all line of sight and sight distance and stopping distance that we look at.
So I, I guess what, so does it, I mean, potentially, I mean, this essentially happened to me a year and a half or so ago when, you know, I was coming over the hill, headed toward Rapid City. And there was some cars essentially stopped in front of me because there was a big truck across there. By the time I, I, whoa, and you know, you slow down and by the time, um, so I never had to come to a complete stop, but the cars in front of me actually were. I mean, is it, I mean, is it acceptable really on Highway sixteen when the speed limit's there to have to come to a stop?
No. No, if, if that would happen, then we need to mitigate it. We need to figure out what the solution is to that and figure out what we need, what, what, what we want to do with it, so.
You know, one observation I made at, at, you know, Baker Timber, they have a lot of big trucks and they operate, you know, a little ways further west. But when they turn left, because a lot of their trucks do turn left and head toward Rapid City, they've got that big median in the, between the two lanes. So they, you know, they look at the, the traffic headed west and they sneak across when there's no cars. And then they sit in the median until they can make that left turn. But in this case, the median seems so narrow, um, that it doesn't even seem to be wide enough to accommodate the truck waiting to do that.
It isn't, no, it isn't, that's true. It's, it's narrow for, for a very important reason, it's economics.
Yeah.
Uh, you're coming down that hill and to build something really wide with a nice wide median, you take that whole hillside out and then you waste all that dirt, now where do you put it? So that's why that's all brought in through that whole corridor is, is just to save, uh, when we've built it way back in the seventies, that was to save money.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't doubt that there's a good reason for it, but, so what can be done to, to, to mitigate this? What are some of the options?
There are several options. One, um, and they, they range from relatively inexpensive to very expensive. You know, what we, we, we could require, uh, Kroll to do as a truck is approaching, uh, it activates, um, some signage on both sides, lights that flash up saying truck approaching the highway. It's been done in several locations, especially in, in areas where you got two highways that merge with each other and cross traffic sometimes doesn't stop, allows the other people to know there's someone approaching, so be aware. So they only flash when it's necessary. That's one. It's probably the cheapest. The other thing we can do is, is, is almost ban, uh, left-hand turns, have them go up the hill to maybe we've got better sight distance or, or, or up in a flat spot, which is easier to turn around and come back down. But that, again, is more, we can't always do that, you know, depending on the size of the truck and turnaround and all that kind of stuff. So that might not be a good option. Another option would be, um, as they're coming off, making that left-hand turn, we have an acceleration lane in the median and allow that, that truck to go down that median in a, its own lane for a while to get up to speed so it can merge safely back into traffic. And, and those are some of the options we've been discussing.
But that'd be a pretty tight turn.
It would, it would, but, but we, we can figure out ways, ways to make that, so it, so it would, the goal would be, once we decide what the option is, um, when you're driving a truck, um, it's the truck's responsibility to make sure that his truck stays in the lane he wants to be in. He doesn't go into or encroach the, the next lane over. So we'd figure out that turning movement so that they can make that maneuver safely.
So an option would be to, to prohibit left turn so that the trucks would have to go west until they got to, let's say, where Baker Timber is and then go where the median is real wide there and go across.
That's one option. However, when you, again, when you do that, you, now you're taking that loaded truck up the hill.
Right.
He's going five to ten, fifteen miles an hour, traffic behind him is going sixty miles an hour. Um, they recognize that truck's going slower, they don't recognize how quickly they're going to impact him. We have this on our interstate right now with our snowplow drivers. Our snowplow drivers are, their lights, their lights are blazing. How can you hit one of those? We get hit, we've gotten hit twenty times this year on, on the interstate, just because they don't realize we're going thirty and they're going seventy and they, they rear end us.
You know, the last thing I'll say is that, um, Highway sixteen is very different in winter and summer. And so I don't know if it makes a lot of sense to talk about averages, um, like average traffic and average this, because that highway is very different in the winter and summer. And so it, it seems to me that when the, when, when the discussions are had and the, you know, mitigation is being crafted, it really have to look at summer traffic, because I mean, it also seems to me that's going to be the busiest time at the quarry, because that's when they're going to be doing construction and so on. So it just seems to me that this has to be a summertime analysis rather than like this average analysis that you kind of combine winter and summer together.
When, when we do our traffic counts, we don't do them in the wintertime, uh, because we put those little rubber tubes out and our snowplow drivers just like to knock them things out of the way. Um, so we actually do them when, when we're not, it's not going to snow. So, so, you know, this from, from May through August, September is when we actually lay those tubes out there and count. Now they, 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 they're able to, um, do some mathematics to average that out a little bit. But for the most part, we, we do do them during that time. Uh, we've also, and, and at times have done some additional traffic analysis where we leave, leave those out there for a week or two weeks, count every hour just to see where the peak traffic is so we, we know what's going on. Those are discussions we've had with Kroll as well. The, the peak hours are this, maybe it's, that's not a good time for you to be hauling at all. So, so you, you start hauling at three o'clock in the morning and nobody's out there and you work your nine hours. So you're, you're done early afternoons, so then the traffic has it the rest of the time. Those are just things that we've discussed with them. And I don't know when Kroll is going to haul stuff out. You know, I've, I've been in this business for thirty-six years. If I'm doing an asphalt overlay project and I'm doing it sometime in April, uh, excuse me, if I'm doing it sometime May, June, July, August timeframe, September timeframe, sometimes I'll build my stockpiles in the wintertime or in the early springtime. That's when I build my stockpiles for this forty or fifty thousand ton project I'm going to, I'm going to use. So it, it just depends on, on the project, where the project's located, what material they need and when they're going to start the work.
I see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Karen.
My, uh, my concern, Mr. Carlson, too, is, is the traffic. Uh, can you talk a little bit more about, uh, deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes, uh, specifically for like that area? How could that even be accomplished?
Um, what we would do is we would just, if, 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 depending on where we're at, we'd, we'd either take the shoulder, the shoulder might have to encroach a little bit into the inslope. We would take the shoulder and just build that, um, acceleration lane or deceleration lane in. And if it's, if we're doing a median sign, we would take part of that median, extend. Uh, right now, that approach has a pipe going through it. We would just extend that culvert going through there until wherever it outfalls at, and then we would extend that acceleration lane going down the hill. Um, we'd probably have to do it on both sides. So we both have, we have decel and exel on both sides, just so we don't, which way the material's going to go. So, you know, those are discussions we're going to have to have.
But that is something that's possible for the?
Easily done. You know, they, they mentioned earlier about the two and a half miles, the, the private residence up two and a half miles. That, that doesn't, wasn't a DOT requirement, we didn't make them do it. They said, we want to do it. And I said, okay, you don't need to, because we've done some studies, you don't really need to. They said, we don't feel safe, we've got the money, we got, you know, we got a hundred thousand dollars to blow, let's do it. Okay, we'll let you do it as long as you do it to our standards. So all we did was we forced them to do it to our standards, make sure they did it appropriately. But, but that was their decision to go ahead and put that accelerate, decel lane in there, so. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
So based on the current traffic counts and the estimated number of trucks, uh, turning left or right into the, into the, into the quarry, um, are there any requirements now for them to do any of these mitigation measures? And then the second part of my question is, is, uh, what, what's that threshold where, where it triggers those changes?
Right now there is no, and Stacy will tell me if I'm wrong, she'll, she'll just run up here real quickly. But right now there, there really are no thresholds for trucks as to when you develop those. And so there are some standards out there that some states have used. We looked into that and, and we may use that here. Uh, we may be more harsh and, and do it sooner than what other states have done. We haven't figured that out yet. There's, there's something we're working on.
But currently there's no requirement, um, based on the proposed traffic there that anything needs to be done?
Since it's not being used as a pit right now, no. Um, and once something happens there, we'll have some more discussions with Kroll, figure out what their plan is, how much traffic they anticipate, and then we'll decide based on the ADT what we're going to do. You know, that, this is actually one of the places that we're studying in our, in our, um, corridor study going through sixteen right now is, is this location right now. So we'll have a good idea of what future forecasted, uh, traffic will be in that area up through, uh, twenty fifty or something like that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? So, so I have a couple of questions. One, I'll just kind of piggyback on what Rich said. So you don't have a, a trigger mechanism at this point in time to say at a hundred thousand that we're going to require this or at seventy-five thousand time, we're going to require this. That's not in place. There's nothing there. You've talked to them about it. You've said these are some suggestions. What are we, is there leaning to anything? Because, I mean, traffic is a concern for me. I've driven that road every day, many days, whenever I work in the tourist season. Uh, so I do travel that road. And I've got kids now that are working in the tourist industry that, somebody else saw him here today, and he's young and he's a new driver. So obviously I'm going to be a little concerned about that. So what are y'all thinking about? What, what is being talked about? Because that's going to be something, there's got to be some kind of safety mechanism out there to warn drivers, especially tourists who don't, or who aren't even familiar with the area.
Sure. I, I grew up in Hill City and right now I live out in that area and I still have family in Hill City Keystone area. So I drive it, I drive it often as well, so I, I have the same concerns as you do. Um, we were getting close to, to figuring out what we want to do and then all once, um, they were denied that mining permit. So we didn't explore it any further. Uh, there's no sense in us exploring further until, until such time that there's going to be activity in there. And at that time, we'll figure out what those thresholds will be.
So it's kind of like pass it and then we'll figure out what we're going to do?
No.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking the question, because that's what it sounded like.
The, the, the reason we haven't made a decision yet is, is, like I said, there's, there's no national standard out there right now. Oh, did I screw up?
No, but I think my question.
So we do have in our administrative rules, the truck traffic increases by ten percent. And so, you know, all's we really have to base it on is what was happening there before. And we do have the historical data, actually that was provided by Kroll from when Pearly operated there. We know how many tons came out per day. We know the size of their trucks. We know they were hauling thirty-two tons a day. So we'll be able to, um, Kroll has actually agreed to, um, give us their, a monthly sales or give us permission to get them from the Department of Revenue. So we'll know how much is coming out of there and so we'll have the threshold for the ten percent to enforce our administrative rule. But, you know, that's pretty hard to enforce unless you have the historical data and, um, that's the only thing we have to do.
So what does that do? If, if they increase by ten percent, what enforcement of that rule, what does that mean? What are y'all going to do at that point?
Then we'll look at more the, um, expensive form of mitigation, like Mike indicated, which, um, would obviously be the, um, acceleration and deceleration lanes. But, you know, we, we hate to add that extra width out there to the, the highway if it's not needed. So, you know, that's why we don't just come out and say, you know, put that into that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Sandy.
So if we were to give them permission to do it and then they were to go back, the Department of Transportation goes back in, do you then have the authority to demand that they do that? I mean, you could shut them down if they weren't willing to do your acceleration or deceleration or the various lanes?
I don't know if we have the authority to shut them down, but what we, we, we will not have a road that doesn't meet our safety standards. Um, we'll have an agreement in place with, with Kroll. I have no doubt. Um, we'll have an agreement in place with with Kroll. I have no doubt about that. They'll do their they'll they'll do what needs to be done to keep that road safe. However, if they decide not to or somebody else comes in and decides not to, the department will build it because we're not gonna have a road that's not safe.
I see. And then we the taxpayers will pay for it or will they be assessed?
Well, it's not it's hard for us to assess them, but but we we will, it'll be paid for by taxpayers. We'll try to get the money out of out of whoever is doing it. Right now, I feel confident that that we'll get an agreement with Kroll as to what their responsibility is and what ours is and we'll get it done.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Right, Sandy. Kathy.
You know, and I I understand, you know, you've got your administrative rules and that one of the criteria talks about this increase of ten percent. But, you know, I'll I'll just repeat what I said. I think that, you know, in the past, you know, much of the traffic turned right, those heavily loaded trucks versus going, you know, cutting all through all four lanes of traffic and turning east. I it's hard to me to understand that even if it's not a full ten percent increase, that to me is a real change in the traffic pattern and that should, it seems to me somehow or another should trigger some of these reviews.
And and it will. I mean, the day they're out there um operating and using the approach, we're gonna be watching that. Um, but but in order to enforce our administrative rules, that's what that's what we have. We we can't enforce them unless we have something like that. But there's there's if there's crashes out there, um which we don't want to see. I mean, you'll see mitigation happen. Um, one of the things that we've talked about with Kroll is um, you know, limiting the hours they can use the approach and um they've even said, you know, anytime we 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 want it to be safe, anytime you want to shut us down, come out, we'll stop the operations. We'll give you that in writing. And actually, we, I mean, we have that and they they have added that in their traffic impact study.
You have that in writing?
Yes, I do have it in writing.
But surely you don't wait for crashes before you do something.
We don't wait for crashes, but crashes happen. I mean, it's it's part of an intersection and and we don't want them ever. And we we try to do everything to prevent them, um but it they do happen and and anytime an intersection is used, um no matter what type of use it is, um they're more vulnerable.
Right.
Speaking of crashes, just because you're talking about them and that again, I told you all, traffic is a big concern of mine. I even asked Brittany for some very specifics on crash and and like locations where crashes were and what they were. And as I read them, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I remember seeing any crashes in the area that dealt with a truck. They were all personal, individual vehicles, deer strikes mostly, but then there were other incidences with vehicles as well.
In approximately one mile each way of that approach, there was thirty six crashes. Twenty two of those thirty six were animal hits. Um, I mean, it it's a it's a no fault. Um, not a single crash occurred at the approach and um none of the crashes involved heavy vehicles.
Correct. What about down the hill traveling east um near um uh Reptile Gardens? Have there been any uh large truck accidents there from this particular pit or any other, I guess?
I I don't think we've studied that. Uh, we we do have some accidents in there as they've been alluded to earlier that we did have some accidents down there. And we're looking at how to mitigate those accidents down that location, too. That's.
There's a lot of accidents down there from personal vehicles down there. I mean, I'm the EMT. I've kind of watched a lot of them and there there's been a lot of regular vehicles. And I think that's why, you know, whenever they said, okay, there's people that speed through there. Well, yeah, you're right. And so that's why the liability is on that individual. They need to follow the the traffic laws and they should be held responsible.
And we're looking, we've we've got something on a long range plan right now to figure out some money set aside so we can figure out how to address um the accidents down around Neck Oak Road and Reptile Gardens. So we're we're gonna do something down in there sooner rather than later, but it's a few years out yet because we don't know what to do to make it safe. You know, we can't put a stoplight down there because we can't expect to have the six hundred trucks to come down the hill and stop and then try to go back up the hill again. That's just gonna create more accidents for us. So a stoplight won't work. Uh, what other mitigation? You know, I was thinking a flyover bridge right through there. So no one has access to those, but that doesn't work either. That's just too damn expensive and no one wants that. So somewhere between a stoplight and flyover bridge, we'll figure out what's what's the right right formula for that one.
And then would I, I think I just have one other area to touch base on, uh, well, maybe two. Someone made a statement that y'all won't reduce the speed limit on that highway from sixty five miles an hour. Is that correct?
It's it's sixty.
Because I'd say it's sixty.
It's sixty five on both. Well, sixty five going going west. I don't know where that starts at, but coming down the hill and going back up the hill, it's back down to sixty. We're not gonna reduce reduce it any any lower because that just makes liars out of all of us. And the and the reason we've it's been stated, we don't, we're not looking at reducing speeds. That does not reduce accidents. Because how we set up our speed limit is we set our speed limit up on what the majority of the traveling public feels comfortable safely driving that road. And right now, that's those speed limits that we have posted right now. So if we make them lower, what we're forcing the people to drive do is look at their speedometers instead of keeping their eyes up on the road and making sure they keep hitting the brake while they go down. Or they'll drive at whatever speed they want to. Now we've got speed differentials going down that hill with people going the right speed, people going the speed that they feel comfortable driving. We have some more problems. It's also then becomes an enforcement issue. So now we're gonna ask, and we we're not in charge of enforcement. So now we're gonna ask Pennington County on high patrol to constantly go up and down this corridor to pick up speeders. And then it becomes a speed trap. And then Reptile Gardens and all the tourist industries don't want us to know that this is a speed trap. They're going, they they want your money. They don't want your money at the tourist facilities. The the state wants your money. That's how we set the speed limit up and that's why it's the way it is right now.
Okay. Do you have a question? Do you have a a tag on that particular?
I just have another question. When you finish with.
All right. The last one I had, and I'm not a mathematician here, but there was a a statement of extrapolating from one to two vehicles uh that they could drive, but based on the permits that they're saying that really could be five to ten vehicles. Do you can you say anything about that? Because I I heard what he said, but I was like, I I don't know if I can see that happening. And so I just would like to know.
We we were we were computing back here when the when those those numbers were being thrown back and forth and and based on their thirty two ton load and one point six um vehicles per hour for a nine hour event, that's five hundred thirteen tons per day, which is close to what the guy said was five hundred forty tons per day. You know, another thing we've talked about actually is not allowing um trucks and pups or reducing the trucks and pups. So it's just it's just a truck going through there for just because of the narrow median. So those are all options that are on the table right now. We don't know which way to go. We need to talk with Kroll to figure out what works best for his operation, what works best for the safety of the highway, and we'll come up with those mitigation efforts.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
My question was really the Bear Country issue. You know how um during certain times, particularly, you know, when the Cubs, but even in the summer sometimes, you know, the traffic really backs up there along and they they just sort of on the shoulder and so on. Um, so in your in your discussions and your thought process and so on, you know, are you factoring that into this to try to to try to reduce the conflict between the Bear Country patrons and um, you know, the trucks and so on or?
You know, and Bear Country is a very good point. Um, when they first built Bear Country, there were no turning lanes or deceleration lanes going into Bear Country. And so they they built uh Bear Country and then it grew into something bigger. And when they first built it, their entrance was really close to the highway, if you remember. And then we asked them, you need more storage. So they built their entrance back further and built more lanes for them to go in. They still come onto the highway. So we said enough is enough. We gotta figure out something else. So so we partnered with them to build those those turning lanes. We paid for part, they paid for part. You know, we gave them the cheap part. We paid for the expensive part so that we could keep that highway safe and mitigate those risks. Uh, right now, the only time I I I'm aware that we have problems really is is during the the cub.
Cub season.
Yeah, the Cubs season. And I've I've heard that traffic's backed all the way down.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
The problem there is who's gonna mitigate that? It's 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 one event over a weekend. The cost to mitigate that is so expensive. And then if we've if we force Bear Country to do something there, um that's the end of of the bear cub cubbing.
Right.
And we don't want that either.
I mean, I understand. I mean, I don't think there's really needs to be any action taken for that one weekend and so on. But I mean, even in the summertime, you know, right at uh when they, you know, people line up before they open and so on, and the cars can really, you know, go down the hill ways. I I just was wondering in general whether the the Bear Country situation, not necessarily the Cub weekend, but in general, is a factor in all the ultimate resolution or the ultimate mitigation.
Not really. They're they're separated by by quite a distance. I don't know if it's it's probably a thousand feet or fifteen hundred feet. There's enough distance there right now that's not a problem. It's something we're gonna continue to look at. And if we need to figure out something to mitigate that, we will. But right now, we don't see it being a problem. Doesn't mean it won't be in the future.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Gary.
Stacy, I got a question for you relative. I wasn't listening close enough. When you talked about the thirty six accidents, twenty two of which were animal hits, how far of an area, does that go all the way down to like Reptile Gardens then?
It was about, no, um, it was um about a mile either side of the approach.
Okay, okay. So it didn't include that intersection down below?
No.
Okay.
And, you know, I I don't think it's any secret that two of the highest um crash um locations are the intersection of US sixteen and sixteen B um and um down by Neck Oak Road, too. And so, you know, we were really trying to stick to the facts here and look at this area, this area of influence on the highway.
Thank you.
Any further questions? PJ, you're flagging me.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chair, for the commissioners, if you have your blue binders in section ten, um, the traffic study is in there, which includes some maps and some more information about the accidents that you guys were discussing.
Any further questions for the Department of Transportation while they're up here? Not saying you can go unfortunately, but just.
Anything we didn't ask you that you want to share?
Just give me the facts.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody? Um, is there any further questions, any further discussion, any other individuals you'd like to to speak to?
I've got a question for one of the Kroll people.
Sure, go ahead, Gary.
Uh, my question would be, uh, we we've heard today talking about the amount of traffic, which which way it goes when it comes out of there. And uh, do you have some idea of a percentage of loads that would uh continue on to the south or west as they come out as compared to those that would come back towards Rapid City?
I'm Kyle Freyinger with Kroll. So I believe in the traffic study, our estimation was seventy five percent uh towards Rapid City, twenty five percent uh the uh which would be west towards Hill City.
Okay.
Yeah, estimation only.
Oh, yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any other areas you want to discuss? All right. And that would leave us at this moment. Um, unless there's any further discussion, uh, the opportunity to make a motion. Uh, we'll deal with item number five first on the agenda. Uh, current recommendation is by this uh staff that pursuant to uh county ordinance two oh five C thirty one and three twenty effective on or about March twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, uh, recommend um to approve the mining permit eighteen oh two with the thirty four conditions. Is there a motion or is there any conversation beforehand?
I have a conversation.
Go ahead.
A question.
Sure.
Where is this in all of this paperwork and what are the recommendations? Because typically we get a recommendation from the planning department along with a number of conditions. And I need to see that.
If you look back in section, I believe it's in one.
Tell me which section. Now go there.
The very, very beginning in section one and page fifty two starts the recommendation.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. I want to note that there are in fact currently thirty five conditions.
Thirty five? Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
Um, the the recommendation is on page fifty two of fifty six on item number five in the booklet that we received from staff today.
I I barely heard you there, Rich.
It was on, it's on page fifty two of fifty six, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I I see it now.
Okay.
I just had too much.
Did I say fifty five?
Information.
Fifty two of fifty six.
Yeah, fifty two of fifty six. Okay. And we all can review the current thirty five um conditions. Uh, while y'all do that, I I will say that at least on the traffic side of of this, I'm minimally interested in at least adding um um the flash signage, at least from my perspective, for some safety purposes. I I think that is um important to at least have some kind of warning of that area. I I I know coming, I know traveling west, I I've counted it out the last three days that I traveled out there. As soon as I come around, it takes me about twenty, depending on how fast I'm going, eighteen to twenty seconds to meet that intersection. So I'm traveling west. It's not, I don't think it's a a big deal. However, what was it Tuesday night? It was real foggy. There was um very, very little um visual field out there. Not that I expected anybody to come out at, you know, at nine o'clock at night. I wasn't expecting that. However, I still tracked it just because I wanted to see how far I could see and if there was something like that even during the day or early morning. Um, so I think, you know, at least a signal light from my perspective would give me comfort. Just, you know, that's my perspective. I don't know if that's what the rest of the board is thinking. I know all of us have thought about traffic concerns, so maybe there's something more that or less, but.
Mr. Chairman, I I might just make a comment relative to, uh, my concern is solely on the traffic. And uh, you know, after I hear uh DOT talking about uh the mitigation efforts that they make uh toward this as they watch the the traffic and the traffic counts and the study they're currently into, um, that gives me a lot more comfort that something can be done in the future if if, in fact, uh, we do see uh issues relative to traffic out there. So I'm much more comfortable with that at this point in time than than what it was. So.
Okay.
I like your idea of lights, though.
Yeah, thank you. And and just to be fair, in that traffic study that Kroll provided, and I'll I'll kind of reference it because I thought that was important. I didn't even think about the lights until I read it in theirs because that's one of the things that was recommended. Um, let's see, where was it at? If you're in section ten, it's on that traffic study, the traffic impact analysis. And it says advanced warning signage and and this is on page uh, it's kind of faded. So I think it's I think it says eighteen on it. Uh, and it's from the top, it's one, two, three. It's the fourth paragraph down and it says advanced warning signage and uh signage informing drivers of the present presence of the approach may be considered at this location. With the limited sight distance at this location, it's believed advanced warning signage would provide a significant safety benefit at this location. In order to avoid the potential of driving, ignoring the sign due to its constant presence, it is recommended that a flashing beacon be installed on top of the of the sign, which activates only when the presence of a large truck at the quarry approach to indicate the increased potential of a large truck entering the highway. Uh, these signs should be placed a minimum of the stopping sight distance from the quarry approach approximately six hundred fifty feet for sixty five mile per hour speed limit. Um, I, when I read that, I that was kind of like a, well, if that's the minimal we could do from DOT saying that, I was I was at least well, at the minimum, I think that's very good. And they say that because uh, a couple of years ago, actually several years ago, I was involved uh in New Underwood. I don't know if you guys were familiar with that New Underwood area, but I worked to get the 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 intersection down there changed. And one of the things they ended up putting down there, they changed it up a little bit. Um, and I haven't seen any almost accidents since they did it. They did put a a yield sign with a flashing light down there. And as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any accidents down there. I I could be wrong. I'm just saying I haven't uh witnessed or have heard any. Uh, and I've been in the medical field in ambulances for a while, so I I kind of keep up on that kind of stuff. Um, so, you know, having that flashing light even now uh still keeps it in your mind when you're coming down. So I I at a minimum, I think that should be a requirement from my perspective. Everybody may have something different, but I think it adds to the safety and since it was recommended in here at a minimum that we should consider that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Who would be responsible for meeting that condition of having that emergency light?
Well, if it's on condition of of approval of this, I believe it would be something that the Kroll would have to pay for. Brittany, can you clarify that or do you know or can we can we dictate that? I mean, how does that work? Or is that a Michelle Hoffman question? Or Department of Transportation? Okay. They're like, pass the buck.
Turn around the circle in a hurry.
Clarification as far as it being a conditional use permit, you know, under section three twenty, it's a conditional use permit. Um, typically, this board has had some purview in adding conditions. Whether
Whether we could require that in DOT, enforce it, make sure it happens, that would probably be a question for them. Because we don't have any ability, I don't know what would meet their criteria. So if you were saying that they had to do something, we would still have to work with them to make sure this meets their standards. And I don't know if they have to go through engineering and certain things that would require that.
So if Kroll was to pay for it, then you, they would have to consult with DOT to make sure it met X requirements. And I'm, just with the mindset, since you asked that, and I'm looking at this, this is traffic impact analysis for the Kroll Quarry, prepared by Kroll Ready Mix, or prepared by Interstate Engineering for Kroll Ready Mix. So they requested it, and that's the recommendation there. So I, I mean, recommendation to that, well, I guess it depends on how you take it, but I would look at it as it's a recommendation to them, you know, in favor, you know, if I,
Sure.
If we say, well, that's the one thing we'd like for you to do, the question is, is Kroll willing to do that? If that's going to make or break this vote. So, you know, I would maybe ask Mr. Brady if he'd come up and say, is that, at a minimum, a requirement that Kroll's willing to take on as a cost of their doing business with that as a condition?
Well, I think, well, the answer is yes. As I said, and as Kroll has been working with the DOT since two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, we're going to work with them. And I think Mike Carlson and Stacy Bartlett set it forth very clearly, what they're looking at and what we're talking to them with. We're going to work together to accomplish a safety issue out there. And because it's in everybody's interest. So if that's going to be a condition of your deal or not a condition of your deal, that's something that we're working with the DOT on to do. And no, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
You know, I don't disagree that that would be, I mean, I'd certainly support a condition like that. But I guess I'm, to me, it causes a bit of concern, and it is because, one, is that, you know, that may not be the recommendation that comes out of the Department of Transportation, that that may not be the mitigation of choice. And I'd hate to get out in front when DOT is the one that really has to make that decision. And secondly, those flashing lights, I mean, they make all kinds of sense, a caution, warning kind of stuff. But to me, it also says you might have to stop. And I don't think people should be stopping on Highway sixteen. And I just don't want to give the impression that it's okay to, if you put the light warning you, then you, you know, to warn people they might have to stop, then they have to stop. And I think that's bad precedent to think that stopping is okay on Highway sixteen.
Go ahead, Michelle, before I make a statement.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I'll defer to DOT, but my understanding is that Pendleton County has no jurisdiction over a state highway. So I question whether it's even appropriate for this body to impose that as a condition.
Mike Carlson, DOT, I'd probably have to concur with that.
So then maybe the question from this body is to you guys, are you willing to make that a condition?
We're going to do something. But again, as Johnson talked about, that might not, we might need to do more than that. So to set that as a condition and then require something additional, we might require something additional. And then we'd work through Kroll with that as to what addition we want to do and not, maybe not do the flashing lights.
But, sir, you indicated you weren't going to do anything until there had been accidents and problems.
No, ma'am.
Then you were going to do something.
No, we, what we discussed, that's one way to do it. That's not our preferred way of doing it, and that's not the way we're going to approach this, is we want to do something before we have accidents. So we want to talk with Kroll once, if something happens and they start actively mining, we want to see what they're, how much they're going to haul out there, which direction is going to go, and what we need to do to mitigate that. And we'll have those answers relatively quickly. And then we'll work through those as to who pays for what. We're going to pay for part of it, how much we're going to pay for, it's yet to be determined. Because we don't feel it's fair for Kroll to pay all of it, even though Pitt's been in there since nineteen sixty-six. When Pitt was in nineteen sixty-six, traffic at that time was a thousand. Now traffic's at nine thousand. Kroll's not responsible for the eight thousand. So at what point is the DOT responsible for something to make that road safe? And at what point is Kroll responsible for making something up there that's safe? So we have to have those discussions. That's why we haven't gone very far yet, because those are complicated discussions, and nothing's happening out there. So no sense having discussion until we know what the traffic count is. If it's another ten years before they get out there, traffic's going to be at twenty thousand, what we had conditions right now doesn't make any sense. So we have to work through those once we know something's happening out there.
Jim, do you have a question? Go ahead.
I think the only feeling I have is a sense of urgency that we don't allow Kroll to get this mining permit. And then, lo and behold, we wait months, months, a year, year and a half, and you guys are still studying because traffic is changing and so on and so forth. I think there's a sense that something, because even under present traffic conditions and current circumstances, it seems like that situation begs for a little something right now. And that maybe there's, down the line, there's a longer term, you know, solution. But I would just like to have some assurance that something was going to happen in the near future.
You know, it's going to take, if you guys, let's say you approve it tonight, and they start operations tomorrow, I don't think they can start that fast. They start operations tomorrow, it's going to take a while to get a site prepared, get it, get the overburden off, store it someplace else, get the things drilled, get it shot, get the big rocks moved to the crusher. They don't have a crusher up there yet, get the crusher set up, ready to go, start crushing material, get enough material crushed before they can start hauling out. We'd be, you know, we're going to have decisions within, once something happens within a couple of months, we know what we're going to do, and we're going to start moving forward. Whether we get it done this year, we're already in May, probably can't get it done this year. But depending on what happens, probably by next year, we can't do it in the winter time, we can't build roads in the winter time as much as we would like to, as much as the tourist industry would like us to build roads in the winter, we can't do it. But probably by next year, something will be done out there. And that's quick for us.
Well, that makes me feel somewhat more comfortable. And I appreciate the constraints of, you know, the reality of operations and all that, so.
One thing that we could add that might help you feel a little bit more comfortable is, we already stated that South Dakota doesn't have any regulations or laws or anything regarding truck mitigation. But when you go to other states and look at what's recommended nationwide, it's about five to ten trucks turning per hour. When Pearly Pitt was operating and just going off from the past records and estimating what the trucks were, you were seeing somewhere between two and four trucks per hour. With what Kroll is estimating, you're seeing four to five trucks per hour. So typically, you know, if you go to, and we're South Dakota, our traffic is different than Colorado's, ours is different than Wyoming's. But if you go to our neighboring rural states, all of there, if you look through their design manuals, it's all five to ten trucks. And it's typically more towards that ten per hour threshold.
So you're telling me they're going to be running four to five trucks an hour, or in that one point eight trucks, is that an average, or?
No, I'm telling, I'm telling you that if Kroll produces the two hundred thousand tons per year,
Okay, okay.
What you're looking at, seeing them do is have four to five trucks an hour coming into that approach. Not the whole day, but during the peak time that is of their operation. That's typically what you're going to see based on estimating truck hauls.
Right, Kathy.
But you know, when I hear that, you know, I get, I mean, I'm horrified. Because to me, the way, without any mitigation, that means that four or five times an hour, traffic might have to stop. When those big trucks cross, you know, the highway. And that, to me, is not right.
And I would agree with you that that is not right. But what I want to point out, too, is when Pearly was operating, you were seeing two to four trucks per hour, somewhere two, three, or four.
Those long of trucks blocking all four lanes?
You were seeing the same size of trucks. And so, and I don't think they've ever, I could be wrong because I've never seen it, but blocking all four lanes, that I don't know.
It has happened, I mean, I really have seen it. And there's a letter from a public that a woman who, you know, just, in fact, she even reported it because it was such an alarming incident to her. And it's in here, she reported it to the police department, so it does happen. But I think part of the, excuse me, I didn't, I think I interrupted, I'm sorry, but is because, you know, in the past, much of the traffic just had the right-hand turn. So you didn't have that long left turn across all four lanes of traffic, which is going to be now the predominant situation. So I think it just, to me, it adds an issue that, so it's not quite right to compare just the numbers in the past with the numbers anticipated here.
And I don't think we'll do that. With the amount of public opinion in this matter, we take that into consideration as well. So we're not going to wait for that threshold of five to ten, we're going to do something ahead of that. As to what that is, we don't know yet, but we're going to do something ahead of that.
And the five to ten threshold, and not that it matters, but I'm just trying to give you an idea of other states' design standards that is for a left turn. That's not for a right turn into approach, that's a left-turning vehicle.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
As I look through the thirty-five conditions, I don't see anything that mentions DOT unless I've missed it. I don't know if that's for any reason, but if not, perhaps a condition could be added that said something like that the applicant cooperate with the Department of Transportation to implement the appropriate safety measures as determined by the Department of Transportation prior to commencing operations? That would be less specific.
And give them the added, and give them the flexibility to say, well, maybe signage is not the appropriate thing, maybe signage and an excel lane, decel lane, or something of that nature, is that what you're kind of getting at, to give them that opportunity?
Say that they need to work together to implement the appropriate measures.
This is a conditional use permit, isn't it? So it will be reviewed in a year?
Well, no, it doesn't say that, but we could put that into, in the review in accordance with three twenty J of zoning ordinance.
Well, I think that would be desirable, just, I mean, I'm sure everyone is going to be well-intentioned, that's not my concern. What I'm concerned about is circumstances and time will slip away, and then we'll be right back where we started from and through no individual's fault, but through, you know, kind of a group of actions. I just don't want us to get to that point. So I would think that it should be reviewed in a year.
And I would be in concurrence, yes, Gary.
If you look at condition number thirty-five, that does call for a review. Says the mining permit may be reviewed in accordance with three twenty or as directed by the Planning Commission and/or the Board of Commissioners to verify all conditions of approval are being met.
So we could direct it for a year?
Process is in place, it's just. It is, but it's no time period. Seems to me it ought to be within a year. It, for all practical purposes, it would be fairly straightforward if the only concern we had or thing we were looking at was the traffic situation, which might be the case. I don't expect Kroll to depart from their agreement and commitment to these things in any way. But this, I think needs to be pushed a little bit. Oh, man, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Kathy.
Somebody just indicated that we, as a county entity, had no influence over a state highway. And therefore, requesting something regarding traffic would be moot point.
No, I'm sorry, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, we don't have jurisdiction over state highways, but this is a conditional permit that you're issuing for Kroll to operate this pit. So you certainly can direct Kroll, I believe, to cooperate with DOT. And I believe that language was advocate to cooperate with DOT to implement appropriate traffic safety mitigation measures. So DOT sells control of the highway, DOT is still determining what those appropriate mitigation measures are. You're just telling Kroll that they need to cooperate with DOT.
Before, we had a specific idea of the sign or whatever.
I see, thank you.
Tom Brady, the wording of Mr. Rivers is understood. That's precisely what we intended to do, and we have no objection to that being number thirty-six.
Can you state that again, if that's something we want to add there, just for the record so we have it? You don't remember what you said? I'm just kidding. I just saw the look on your face.
That the applicant cooperate with the Department of Transportation to implement the appropriate safety measures as recommended by the Department of Transportation prior to commencing operations? Or something to that effect?
I think it's.
Go ahead.
I think the word recommended is a little weak. I think that the DOT is actually going to require something, so I think it should be required, as required by the Department of Transportation.
Do you have any qualms with that, Sonny?
I agree with that, yeah, required, not recommended.
Anybody else have any, go ahead, Michelle.
Sorry, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, I think the last phrase prior to commencing operations is a little difficult because operations can mean many different things. Maybe you just leave it as required and directed by DOT. And I would assume they may have, they'll accommodate for the appropriate time when those measures need to be implemented.
Okay, but the idea behind that part was, you know, you don't want to start moving trucks and then take a year to figure out what the right thing to do is. That's what I was trying to address with that, with that part.
Maybe there's a better way to.
Mike Carlson, DOT, the only thing, you could say it prior to hauling operations, allow them to crush, allow them to do all the other work, but before they haul trucks out to the highway, the mitigation has to be in place.
That makes sense.
There you go, the right wording.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item, comments?
No.
Kathy?
I don't comment on the traffic anymore, but I would like to dress the water when it's.
Absolutely.
You know, I would like to recommend or suggest that two additional conditions are added that deal with the water supply, quantity. And, you know, I come at this from knowing a little bit about the Deadwood Formation and the fact that it really is limited in its water amount. And I certainly respect the analyses done by the Mr. Bueller from the D E N R. But it is a tight aquifer, with limited water, I mean, I know that. So, and I do think that their water permit that they have from the state does provide, does give some of the responsibility to the permee dee. When it says the permit, the owner under this permit shall control the withdrawals, so there is not a reduction of needed water supply. It doesn't say to react once there has already been a reduction. It, you know, it is proactive. So what I would like to suggest is that two conditions are met. One of them is a very similar to condition to three and four that are already there. But it says that the conditions of the approval of the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources water permit be continually met, just as simple as that. And make it, you know, kind of parallel to these other two, which address the air quality permit and surface water discharge and then stormwater discharge. And, I mean, so there could be argument as to what that clause, that sentence really means in the permit, but that it's important for us to have that in there to make sure that they are continually met in the same way that the other permit requirements are met. And then additionally, you know, according to three twenty, this is in H, number H two, underground water monitoring. It says, "Based on site-specific conditions, the Board of Commissioners, as a condition of approval of the mine permit, may require the applicant to perform baseline testing of up to three wells located within fifteen hundred feet of proposed perimeter of the mining area." And it goes on to say certain things. But baseline channel established at a minimum bacteria, turbidity, and potential groundwater drawdown due to pumping. Well, I don't really think bacteria is an issue, I'm not worried about turbidity, and I'm not even worried about pumping terms. But I think taking basic water level measurements throughout a season at least, so you have four measurements, you know, winter, spring, summer, fall, in some of the nearby wells would be important baseline to have to, so that there's a measure to compare against when, if the concern arises that there is a drawdown. And the logical well to start with is Bear Country, because it's, you know, within a quarter mile. with is Bear Country, because it's, you know, within a quarter mile. Um, you know, I think it'd be wise to even go a little bit further out and take some baseline measurements, but they would be outside this 1,500 feet. So I don't know if we want to do that or not. But our minimum, uh, require that baseline data for the Bear Country well.
I'm, I seem to be, uh, I shouldn't say I seem to be. That was one of the areas when I read the, uh, South Dakota Water Management Board, um, final, um, that Mr. Brady brought up to our attention and said that was final, um, that it did say that. And it and it has it very directly stating that it is in their ball. It's in their court. You know, the 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 well owner under the per- under this permit shall control its withdrawals so that there is no reduction of needed water supplies in adequate domestic wells or inadequate wells having prior water rights. So I'm I'm inclined to agree with that, that there should be something in place that they're being proactive to protect the water in the area. I mean, I, you know, I'm a big, if you have water, I think you should be able to get to it and and the business shouldn't be able to pull the water and make it where you don't have water anymore. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Rich?
Um, are you indicating that they would perform baseline testing on that well four times a year?
Well, I don't think that, um, that this allows us to require ongoing, uh, testing, but it seems to be a that a good baseline measure, uh, would be more than just one sample. There's a, you know, the hydrograph in here and it's on that monitoring well that's located, you know, 2.7 miles away. That, it shows that the that the water level fluctuates about 65 feet up and down over time. So there's no natural fluctuation. And so it just seems to me that rather than one number, it would be better to have a few numbers. And it is kind of seasonal because of the, it's so subjective to that recharge coming in. So I don't know if we can do that, require, you know, seasonal four to four, um, four measurements over a year to per- to get baseline. Uh, but if that's, if we can do that, I think that would be wise.
I guess I'm just concerned about the specifics there because, um, if if they measure that and then we go into a drought period, how are you going to ensure that that baseline isn't based on the the drought that's currently happening versus usage from their well?
Right. Well.
How are you going to resolve that question mark?
Here's how I would do it if it were me. We have that monitor well that's, you know, 2.7 miles away, which the D N R does ma- monitor. And so you would expect with a drought to have kind of a same fluctuation in that, a normal fluctuation. And so that if you had a start, uh, at the local well, you could use the the kind of seasonal fluctuation from the other well to, you know, infer how the drought might affect it.
I guess from my my position, I'm not necessarily opposed to going out and taking other static well measurements, but, uh, ultimately, the the judge and the jury on that is is the state water board, correct?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, to me, when I read this, the the, I mean, it doesn't say in here that the state will go out and determine if there's impact. It says that the owner of the well will control its withdrawals. So there's not a reduction in needed water.
But how will it be monitored?
Well, that's, that would be the responsibility of the owner.
Mr. Chair.
Comment.
He could go.
Okay. I I just wanted to make sure he wasn't clarifying something, but yes, go ahead, sir.
If I may, Tom Brady. Yeah. Um, appreciate your concern. Uh, the dilemma is using a test well of a private well of somebody else's that we don't have control or access to. Um, talking to the gentleman here, what they suggested is that, uh, use our own well that we drill and, uh, monitor the levels in that. That 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 gets about as close to ground zero as any. And, uh, and and we have the capacity then to do that of our own well.
But, I mean, in other words, do you develop, install your well, develop it, and not use it for production for until you have established the baseline?
Well, we can, we can measure our, when we're using it, how it affects, uh, the static level of water within that. And then you also have your test well that the state has control of.
Isn't their well already there?
No.
No.
From prior operations?
No.
No, there's no, they'd have to drill one.
Well, I under- I appreciate the, um, the dilemma about having a private well. But, you know, we, when we, when we created this, um, H, number, uh, three, 320, H two, you know, we discussed that, that that could be a big problem. If you remember, we talked about what happens if these are private wells. And I think the idea was that there would be an effort made to access these wells such that, because the whole idea would be to protect, you know, the surrounding properties from water, uh, drawdown, water loss. And so that was discussed and there would be an effort made. Certainly, I think it's certainly wise to monitor your own well, but I guess I can't quite separate how you're going to establish baseline when the well's in production.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
That was one of the points that I was going to make is, um, who's going to monitor private wells and other wells? But, uh, assumingly, I just heard that there's some some other wells that could be used that are owned by the state. Did I get that right?
It was just, well, it's not.
Where would these other baseline wells come from? Or, uh, where what would they be?
Chairman.
Monitoring wells.
Yes.
It's too far away. 2.7 miles.
They're a long ways away.
It's too far away. I mean, in my opinion, by the time any serious impact to the Deadwood Aquifer happens from this, the well at the Pearly Pit, for that to be felt 2.7 miles away, all of the intervening water supply is going to be impacted. And so it's just too far away to really be proactive in determining whether there is a, you know, drawdown.
Okay. The the other half of what I wanted to say about that is that they certainly could, um, monitor their own well and what happens in their own well is going to then reflect on what happens downstream, right? So if they see their well getting their static water level dropping and dropping and dropping, that would happen before it would affect presumably any other wells in the area.
Correct.
Also, with the technology these days, these wells can be continuously monitored all the time. It wouldn't have to be a seasonal or or intermittent, uh, check on on these levels. You could actually get continuous data. But who who would be responsible for looking at that data and making a determination? Would we have to require them to submit this data to D E N R? Expect them to report it themselves?
That's a good, that's a good question. Um, I'm just going to comment a little bit on getting private wells. Um, private wells, yes, you're right. Um, how do we mandate going to a private well? I mean, we could say, you can, we we would like for you to reach out to them and then get approval. And if they say no, then there's nothing we can obligate you to. And I say that because my well currently is being, uh, monitored by the United States Air Force, and I allowed them to. If I could have said no, and they can't come and test my well. But because of the, um, the AFOS, you know, chemical that they're testing for, I've allowed them to do that. So they come on my property and they test it so every so often. So the same thing we could apply. I mean, you could say, you know, that there's a a good faith effort to reach out to those private wells to see if they would allow monitoring. If they all say no, then you can't hold them to that. But at least we did our due diligence to say, would you at least reach out to them? Um, so we could say, you know, at least reach out to them. If they deny it, then we can't hold them to that as the standard. But and and I get what you're saying. We still have to have a way to monitor it because I feel, at least reading it, and I'm not a lawyer, and maybe Michelle can kind of give some insight to it, but it sounds like they have an obligation to to mon- to monitor. At least whenever you read, uh, in section nine underneath the South Dakota Water Management Board, um, page two at the very bottom of 4.1, uh, that last sentence, it carries over to page three, the well owner under this permit. Um, and I don't know if you want to, I don't know if you're ready to come up here to maybe give some input on that, but that's kind of what we're talking about, at least from Kathy and my perspective.
I don't have a copy of the D E N R.
Um.
I I do believe, though, consistent with what you've stated, Commissioner Laster, that you certainly could make a condition of this permit that Kroll permit reach out to say, or at least make an attempt to contact Bear Country and can see whether Bear Country will allow them to to perform a baseline, uh, you know, test. Um, and and as you said, if they say no, then certainly you can't hold Kroll responsible for that. But you could certainly impose that as a condition. Um, as far as the individual, they say they drill their own well and they monitor their own well, that information, I believe, could be, um, submitted to the Planning Department for for review.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
But really, there's no, um, drawing down their own well, it's not a problem. It's just when they, when they pump their own wells hard, too hard, and draw down their neighbor's well, that's the problem. So drawing down their own well might be of interest. So you keep track of your own well. But it really doesn't address the issue that we're out, and that is to protect the the neighbor's water.
Correct. Just the question was, who would they submit that information to? And within section 320, uh, PJ, uh, the planning director has a significant enforcement authority, and that information could be submitted to him.
Any further comments on this item? Or is there any recommendations of conditions? I I just heard some conditions. I just was making sure. Thoughts, questions, comments? Any other topics that need to be discussed? Or we have questions on why we have individuals here to, um, reach out and talk to them about? While I think about that, I want to address one thing that I, uh, that did come up during the testimony. And I think it's important, uh, for the public to know this. Uh, one of the gentlemen, I think it was, I think it was Mike Mueller, but I could be wrong. Um, was talking about how, you know, how is this, uh, a mining operation in general ag? Uh, this is something I asked a long time ago and had lots of conversation with the planning office, the planning department about, and we kind of walked through it. It's very important to keep it in ag, in general ag, because we can control it. It's conditional use. We can, we can mandate reclamation. We can make sure, you know, we keep an eye on it and make sure that there's not a big hole left when they're done. If you put it in heavy industrial, like, I'm not saying he was suggesting it, but he was saying it's a heavy industrial operation. If they go in there and they mine it, they open it up, leave a big hole, and they leave, they walk away, and now you've got a big hole in the ground. Um, under general ag, we can, we can, we have a little bit more control in the county to make sure we go back and make sure and monitor and get it reclaimed. And, you know, if we put bonds on, if we make the company put bonds on it, then the county can use that money to go back and and do the reclamation as well. So that's why, um, we've kept it in the general ag, and that's why we want it in general ag, unless you don't want the county to have as much oversight to it. Plus, it doesn't become a conditional use permit. It just becomes a a general operation that they can do all the time without a permit. And if there's any clarification, Michelle, did I cover that at least roughly well? Okay. Um, any other, um, blaring topics, um, to cover or discuss? And if not, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to get this started pursuant to, uh, PCZO, uh, 205C, 31 and 320, effective on or about March 28th, 2018. Uh, make a motion, uh, to recommend approval of mining permit 18 dash 02 with the, I believe we ended at 38 conditions.
Yes, we were talking about them. So we might want to at least clarify which ones we were talking about that you that you agree with.
The 35 written ones.
Correct.
Working with the Department of Trans- Transportation regarding the access.
Right.
And, uh, the mitigation measures prior to hauling operations. Uh, the water permit be continually met. Kathy indicated that. And then, uh, we we would make a recommendation to, uh, reach out to Bear Country to perform baseline static water testing of their well.
And submit that to the Planning Department.
Submit that to the Planning Department.
I only called three. What's the fourth one? Is it four?
No, there's.
There's 35 conditions, and then there were three that we discussed.
Oh, 35, not 34. Okay, gotcha. So there's the one.
There was an error in the printing.
Okay. Comply with the DOT requirements. Then, um, add one that, um, to com- ensure that the conditions of the water permit are met. And then.
Be continually met.
Be continually met.
Yeah, and then the.
As you ordered.
And then to reach out to to Bear Country and.
And do the baseline monitoring, uh.
Static water level.
Section, okay.
Are those clear enough for you?
Oh, yeah, I already got them typed out.
Okay, just want to.
I was going to prestate them as well to make sure we have them.
Okay, you want, you want, yes, please. That way we get them.
So the 35.
I appreciate that.
The 35 conditions is currently stated in the staff report, uh, with the addition of three, uh, requirements. Uh, applicant to cooperate with the Department of Transportation to implement the appropriate safety measures as required by the Department of Transportation prior to commencing hauling. The next condition would be that conditions of approval of South Dakota D E N R water permit be continually met and, uh, direct, uh, the applicant to contact Bear Country to perform baseline line testing of well.
Is everyone clear on that, or is there any?
Is there a need, like in, for example, in 320, um, it, um, it says that baseline shall be at a minimum bacteria, turbidity, and potential groundwater drawdown due to pumping. Is there a need to specify that our interest is just really in water level?
I believe so.
Okay, could you add?
I agree. I agree with that.
I agree.
Motion maker.
Direct, uh, Kroll, Inc., to contact Bear Country to perform baseline testing to monitor, uh.
Water level.
Water level.
Drawdown, water level.
Mr. Chair, I'd second the motion.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wonder, is it appropriate for us to call or to name another entity like Bear Country specifically to use their name in the conditions?
That's the name of the well.
It's the name of the actual well?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if the name of the well.
Okay, in that case, never mind.
No worries. Good, good question. That's a good point.
I believe it can be referred to by its well permit number, and I think that that's in this report. So that.
Could change it to contact property owner to per- uh, perform, uh, baseline testing of whatever the name of the well.
They all have a number.
Number is.
Does the motion and the secondary agree with converting it to the number rather than the?
Yes, I do.
That's a good idea.
Good point. Thank you, Sonny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries.
Roll call.
Item number six.
Chair, do you want to do a roll?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to do a roll call on that?
I'm willing to do a roll call if you would like to. I I heard a no, but I didn't hear multiple no's and.
There were two no's.
There were two no's? Okay. I'm willing to do a roll call vote. Let's, uh, Jerry, go ahead and call the roll.
Let me get my paper over here. Rich?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Sandy?
No.
And Sonny?
No.
Five to two.
Five to two. Motion carries. Item, agenda item number six, construction, construction permit 1811 under Pennington County zoning ordinance 205B, 17, effective April 26, 2017, and 507A, effective September 25, 2013. Under the county ordinance, 507A, effective 23, September, um, of 2013, the planning director has authority to make a decision on construction permit 1811. Um, decision of the planning director on on construction permit 1811. So PJ.
Good evening. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Again, this is for item number six for, oop. And, um, I've listened to the public comment and reviewed the construction permit for CP 1811. And in my opinion, the applicant has met the requirements of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 507A, the requirements of the Pennington County Storm Water Quality Manual, and state requirements sufficient to receive a general permit for storm water discharge associated with industrial activity from the South, uh, which was issued by the South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources. Pursuant to Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 507A, effective September 25, 2013, I hereby approve the construction permit 1811 with recommended seven conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Uh, the Pennington County Planning Director has approved the construction permit 1811 with seven conditions. We anticipate an appeal, uh, by the planning, uh, director's decision. The Planning Department has prepared a notice of appeal. Any person wishing to appeal the decision of the planning director approving the construction permit 1811 may sign the notice of appeal during or the conclusion of this meeting. Uh, as previously stated, the Board of Commissioners will consider the Planning Commission's recommendation and make a decision on mining permit 1802 on Friday, May 10th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. Please be advised to avoid multiple hearings in this manner. The Board, um, Board of Commission, uh, the Board of Adjustment will review the planning director's approval, uh, of the construction permit 18. comments and final decision to Saturday, May eleventh, twenty nineteen, at nine AM. Before we move to item number seven, I'd like to go back, if you don't mind, as a board, I, I forgot to kind of put a public notice out there for the public after we voted on that last, uh, on item number five. If there's any objection, I just wanted to put the public notice out there because I didn't read it at the end.
I'm sorry, I did not understand what you just.
At the end of our voting on item, agenda item number five, I wanted to make a public announcement to the, uh, to the public so that they had the information for the next hearing and everything, so I would like to go back. Uh, do we need to make a motion to that since I'm going back to it? It's just a public notice information. Okay. So this is in regards to item number five, which was the mining permit eighteen oh two. I forgot to do my part to let the public know. Uh, be advised, the Board of Commissioners will consider the planning commission's recommendation and make a decision on mining permit eighteen oh two on Friday, May tenth, at nine AM. It's necessary, if necessary, the Board of Commissioners, uh, may continue the hearing for further public comment and final decision to May eleventh, twenty nineteen. That now takes us to item number seven. Mining permit eighteen oh three under, uh, county ordinance five oh seven B, effective May first, two thousand and one. Under the county ordinance, five oh seven B, effective May one, two thousand and one, the planning commission is to make a decision on mining permit eighteen oh three. Are there any discussions before we move on this?
Oh, we on six or seven?
This is seven. PJ completed six.
I see.
Per our ordinance, he gets to make the decision, that's why he made that. Um, I tried to make enough notes to make sure we didn't get lost in this. That's fair. Uh, yes, go ahead, Kathy.
I would like to suggest that an additional recommendation is added, um, on, um, item seven, uh, that the, uh, conditions of the approval of the South Dakota D N R permit, water permit, um, conditions are continually met, you know, the same condition that we added to number.
Correct.
Five. And, um, you know, the other issue, I'm not sure that we, I, that I, that I'm, the, this ordinance, um, allows the type of condition we had about baseline monitoring, because that specifically we added to three twenty, and that's not in here.
Correct.
But I will say that, you know, even the fire department, um, in their, in their, um, comment, uh, the county fire noted that the, that they rely on the Rockerville Fire Department, which has a well in the Deadwood, and that they have to make sure that that doesn't get, you know, the water to the Rockerville doesn't get, get impacted. So there really is a concern for, you know, broader than, than just, um, you know, than the immediate neighbors about the drawdown. So, I mean, I, if, if that condition in their water permit is indeed met, that there's not a reduction in needed water supply, then the Rockerville Fire Department has nothing to worry about. Uh, and so perhaps that condition that I just suggested is sufficient.
Any further discussion or comments or informational additions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
I'm just wondering how we have just fifteen conditions on this five oh seven B as opposed to thirty-five that we had originally for the three twenty, is there?
Different reas, uh, different ordinance requirements, but I'll let Brittany go ahead and give the, the overview to that.
Brittany Molitor, um, there's different standards of review. So under three twenty, because it was, uh, conditional use permit, it is a conditional use permit under section two oh five. Um, when you look at all of the requirements under that one, that one has, has significantly more requirements under section five oh seven B, prior to the enactment of five oh seven, the standards of review were pretty basic, just a site plan, transportation plan, and amount of material mined, and just some housekeeping things. So that's why, that's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that clarify, Sonny?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask Brittany.
Okay.
Brittany?
Brittany, come again.
So, under five zero seven B, is it, um, is, is it allowable to add the condition about, um, cooperating with the Department of Transportation and complying with their requirements before hauling commences, or however the, however we phrase that for the?
Um, I would say yes, because we have had, um, similar conditions under five oh seven B, um, for haul routes that were on Pennington County roads. Um, but that was a different criteria, obviously, than working with them, um, I mean, I guess it would be up to Michelle, but they do have to submit a transportation information so that, to me, means that there's some maybe flexibility and.
Then I suggest we add that condition as well.
The same traffic, um, consult with D O T. Condition that we had in the other one. I agree with that as well. Any further comment or discussion on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion. The current, uh, motion would be pursuant to county, Pennington County zoning ordinance five oh seven B, effective on or about May first, two thousand and one. Motion to approve, uh, mining permit eighteen oh three with seventeen conditions, noting that there was originally fifteen, and, and we've, there's been a suggestion to add two more.
So moved.
The, the same two that we added to, um, item number five, the, the one about the, um, the, uh, South Dakota water permit, the conditions are continually met, and then cooperating with the, um, Department of Transportation and, um, meeting those requirements.
So moved for approval.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Who's second in there?
I don't think that there was a second. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion and second. I totally thought I heard a second. I'm so, so sorry. Uh, but Sonny did, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Jerry, let's just do a roll call vote on this one, just to make it easy on us.
Sure. Rich?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Sandy?
No.
And Sunny?
No.
Five to seven, motion passes. All right. Any further questions, comments? Oh, yes, thank you, Michelle. I have one more thing to read, just to make sure, so I get all this stuff out there. The Pennington County Planning Commission has approved, um, mining permit eighteen oh three with fifteen, uh, seventeen conditions. We anticipate an appeal of the planning commission's decision. The planning department has prepared a notice of appeal. Any person wishing to appeal the decision of the planning commission approving mining permit eighteen oh three may sign the notice of appeal during or at the end of this meeting.